Thank you. What? It's very sticky. I brought jacket just in case it went the other way. These are for night vision. I don't, I don't wear reading glasses, but sometimes when Mike's not looking, I borrow his.
That's what we can find.
He has, he, about that. I left your message. Voice now. I left that email to my mom. Cardiologist.
Oh, your mom, right.
And I left your voice on. You know, he's very nice. He went to Emory. And he also went to Richard High School. On Montgomery. He's very smart. I went to the, does he put Richard on this? Very much a big shot.
Good evening. This is the Village Council Public Workshop. The date is August 6th, 2025. The time is 7:35. The time is 7:35 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by a posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, the Record, and by submission to all persons entitled the same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting roll call.
Councilmember Mortimer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Perrin.
Here.
Councilmember White is absent.
Councilmember Wimmergrad.
Here.
Mayor Vagianos.
Here. Will you all please join us in a salute to our flag?
Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we go to public comment, I'm going to move up the Matrix report on the Shedler property ahead of public comments so that if anybody wants to ask questions on it, they are better informed after they hear that. So I'm going to invite Chris and Melissa up to speak on this from Matrix. Make sure your green lights are on, and if you could, just as you know, speak closely into the mic.
Got it.
Yeah, you know, lean in, lean in uncomfortably. Great. So if you guys could state your names and what you do and who you work for.
I'm Melissa Fury. I'm the project manager from Matrix for the Shedler property.
Chris Pedder, ECLSRP for Matrix.
Great. Thank you both for coming tonight, and I know that you have a report to give us an update on the soil testing at Shedler. So let us know what you got.
Sure. So as you all know, we have been out to the site investigating, completing site investigation and remedial investigation. We've been out in May of 2024, May, May 3rd, to collect soil samples from the berm. We've gone out last June, June 26th and June 27th, to collect site investigation samples from the balance of the property. Those are the grid samples that we discuss in our reports. We've gone out again in November of last year, November 21st, 22nd, and the 26th to conduct our remedial investigation of the grid samples. And we have most recently gone out again in May of this year, May 22nd and May 23rd, to collect additional remedial investigation samples to help refine our limits of impacted material.
Gabriella, could you go to the other slide? Thank you.
So you sampled four different times. What did that sampling show?
So it, it showed us the soil removal limits that you'll see on the screen here. The western edge of the property is where the berm is located. That's shaded in that brownish color. That is going to all come out. That represents the whole berm that we'll be removing. And then, yeah, maybe zoom in a little bit. And then the tan shaded area represents the soil removal limits that we have defined from all of this soil sampling we did on the balance of the berm.
Got it. And how much, how deep are you going to remove soil from these areas?
It'll vary between two to four feet.
Okay. Now, but you did, that's only a section of the property. You did grid sampling of the entire property, correct?
Yes, yeah.
And what did that show?
That showed that, oop, sorry. With the exception of the, it's kind of hard to see on the screen there. There's four smaller shaded areas throughout the property. With the exception of those locations, the rest of the property does not need further action. So you've got the tan larger soil removal area and those four smaller.
Those four little green dots?
Yes.
Got it. And there's a pink area there. What does that mean?
That's just an area that we need to do some additional testing on.
Got it.
So, so Mayor, if I may, in talking to Matrix, that pink area just needs some hand dig test? There's no drilling involved in that, correct?
No, we're not going to be drilling because they're superficial, not superficial, they're shallow samples that we're going to be collecting.
And those additional samples will determine in that section how far the tan area extends around that. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that's really all that still needs to be done is just to
Yeah, that's just to refine.
Just to determine the perimeter in that section behind the house of where that tan section, which is slated for soil removal, will be extended to.
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, Mayor, thank you.
No, good. So you're going to do some hand sampling there, and you're going to test those areas. And when do you think you'll get the results on those areas?
I'd say in about a month.
Got it. Anything else that we should know about on this page of your report?
No.
Good. And you have another, another page, I believe?
Yes.
Because it came up first. Why don't you tell us what's on this page?
So this page represents the visually observed solid waste, kind of the areas that we identified that in.
And what do you mean by visually observed waste?
That contains stuff like concrete, asphalt, or brick.
Okay.
So Mayor, if I may, through you, Melissa, you're aware that we are in the process of doing an archaeological study with Richard A. Grubb Associates relative to our Historic Sites Council application.
Yeah.
So as we move forward with any type of surface debris that would need to be removed, I would just ask that you consult with Richard A. Grubb only because we don't want to interfere with the archaeological work that's being done on site. So I just need you to communicate and coordinate, actually is probably a better word, with Paul McKeon to make sure that we're not interfering with what their charges.
Yeah, we'll make sure that we're, we're in contact with them and making sure that no artifacts or anything come off with the solid waste.
Okay. So, so you're going to, you're going to check out the debris, you're going to take some more samples. What is the next step?
So we will have to draft a corrective action plan for, submit it to the DEP for their review, which will have our proposed excavation plan on it.
So, so the excavation plan is the actual removal of soil?
Correct, yes.
Based upon the testing?
Yes.
Great. And when do you expect to submit that plan?
About 60 to 90 days. We'll probably get that drafted and submitted.
All right. So it's November, October? So by the beginning of November, you think?
Yeah.
Good. And when do you expect to get a response from the DEP on that?
I would give about 30 days, a month, for review.
All right. And if that is approved, when would you anticipate beginning and completing soil removal on the site?
We could begin that at the end of the year.
End of the year? And how long do you anticipate that might take?
The actual excavation would probably take about three weeks to complete.
Got it. Is there anything else that needs to be done before we can do whatever it is we will want to do on that site?
Aside from the remedial action outcome that Chris will need to issue?
So Chris, what will you do as the LSRP?
Once the removal is complete, I'm just going to issue a letter indicating that remedial action is complete and no additional action is necessary.
So do we need to wait to hear back from the DEP after you submit the letter, or is that the end?
No, once they approve the removal plan, that's going to be pretty much the last time that we're going to need approval from them.
So, so they approve the, the removal plan, and then you certify essentially that the plan has been executed in accordance with, with what was submitted?
Exactly, yep.
And then we're done?
Yep.
Great. Questions?
Your firm does the extraction? It's not somebody, another third party that we have to hire? The removal itself?
We'll supervise the removal, but I think the physical removal will be done by a contractor that's retained by the
So, so that question ties into the proposal that's before the council tonight for consideration of approval at next week's council meeting. What I've asked Matrix to do is to submit a proposal that takes us from today, based on this report and the work effort that was just described, all the way through to the closeout with the DEP after excavation and soil removal is complete. So that's the proposal that's before you tonight for consideration. I can also tell you that as part of this proposal, I've asked them to prepare the bid documents for the physical removal and disposal of the soil. So their charge would be to prepare those bid documents. We would then advertise it. The village would separately contract with the company that's hired to remove the soil. So we'd have an independent contract separate from Matrix, but with Matrix oversight included in it.
So I have a couple of questions. Thank you very much for so much information. With the timeline, can you do the remediation during cold weather? Would snow affect it?
Snow could impact it, but the cold weather won't. I mean, we would, we'd have to work around weather events, but the temperature shouldn't be an issue.
Can you speak up a little bit? It's hard to hear you.
Sure, sorry. The temperature won't really be an issue. If there's weather events, we might have to schedule around that stuff if there's snow or something on the ground, yeah. But actual, you know, the winter time isn't going to impede our ability to conduct the work.
Okay. And two parts about the trees. What are we going to do with the remaining alive trees from the berm? Can they be replanted, transported? Because we, we had like a massive issue with the berm, obviously, and some of them are still surviving, but would they potentially be still contaminated? Are they going as well? Because we'll be asked about the, the remaining trees on the berm. And then on the floor, especially in the northern part, that's, are you going to take out trees with the remediation as well? Do you know how many?
So we, we can evaluate that. That's not something we would really manage. We can tell you whether or not it's acceptable to put them back. But in terms of saving the trees and replanning them, that would be somebody else that would have to manage that.
And then on the ground floor, when you remediate that, you're going to kill most of the root system, right? So those trees will go with the remediation?
Within the area that excavation happens or the removal happens, yeah.
So, I mean, I would be interested, because the remediation's a fait accompli for public safety, how many trees we're going to lose given the sites that they are now? I mean, we're going to have to do, just because there's, there's the public interest in the trees, and then we have the secondary project proposal, and there's remaining trees that are always discussed. And we always say, oh, this is how many trees are remaining. But if the remediation includes the trees, or you're going to shock the trees into dying, which might happen as well. If, let's say there's 100 trees, it looks like 25 to 30% of the northern side outside of the berm will have to go as well. So we're going to lose a significant amount of trees to remediation.
Potentially, yeah.
So can you do a deeper dive into, based on the identified areas that you've presented to the council tonight, how many trees could be impacted on that? Obviously, all the trees on the berm are going to be impacted. I know we did have some discussion early on, and I think one of the questions came from the public, actually, Chris, about whether or not we could safely replant those live trees that sit on the berm in other areas in the village. So, I mean, that's something that I've talked to our Parks Department about. And Matt has said that they're capable of replanting, but I do think we need to just ensure that we have a level of comfort with that based on the public's concern about this property.
Sure, okay.
Okay. And then my last question is small, but the, the sign. How soon after, when you're done, because, you know, we have the interest in the house as well, and the sign's a little intimidating. What's the timeframe on the, you know, the big signs, the poster? How quickly can that come down when we're done?
Are you talking to the public notification?
Yeah, like the, the site investigation sign, oh, yeah.
That, once the RAO is issued, that sign can come down. So after, at the completion of the removal, once I issue that RAO letter, the sign can be taken down.
Anybody else?
Yeah, the term candling, candling of potentially contaminated soil, what does that mean?
What, I'm sorry, what term?
Where is that referenced? Pardon? Where is that referenced?
It's on page one, two, three of the report, middle paragraph. The sentence reads, "Continuous monitoring will be performed for all ground intrusive activities, including but not limited to," maybe this is just a typo.
I think it's handling.
They probably should say handling.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
She doesn't miss anything. I'm just telling you, so.
Okay.
Anybody have anything other than typographical errors they want to say?
So, so Mayor, I do. And I was going to address this under the manager's report, but I think it's best to do it now while Matrix is here. Just for public awareness, because I know there is a lot of interest in the remediation of this site. On July 23rd, responses to the last round of 66 publicly submitted questions relative to soil testing were posted on the village website. In total, that brings us to 317 questions that have been submitted and answered over four rounds of submissions by the public. In addition, we are going to arrange sometime in the fall. I was hopeful that it would be in September. But after speaking later today with both Melissa and Chris, we all agree that it's imperative that we get an approval from Tom Farrell, who is the head of the Bureau of Solid Waste Enforcement down at DEP, that we have his approval on the soil removal plan before we meet with the public. Because what I don't want to have is a meeting where we ask Chris and Melissa to come in and talk about this issue with the public, and they're guessing at answers. We want to be able to have hard answers with an approved plan from the Bureau at the DEP that's going to oversee this project and make sure that we're answering those questions thoughtfully and completely. So we were looking at September now, based on that timeframe that they described to the mayor tonight. I think that might get pushed back, but we are going to have this public forum in the fall, question and answer with Matrix, so that the public can be aware of exactly what the scope of this project is going to look like. In addition, I think it's important for the public to know that in August of 2024, which is a year ago now, the New Jersey Department of Health was petitioned by members of the public to conduct an investigation into health concerns due to the required NJDEP soil testing at the Shedler property. The village fully cooperated with the State Health Department, and as did Matrix. And at the village's direction, Matrix shared all testing data that was required to be completed by the Bureau of Solid Waste at the DEP. On July 16th of this year, last month, the village received a letter from Krista Fontecchio of the New Jersey Department of Health Environmental and Occupational Health Surveillance Program, stating that their review was complete. And I quote from the conclusion of the letter, "Based on the New Jersey Department of Health's evaluation of the November 2024 soil data, harmful health effects are not likely from possible exposures to soil contaminants on the Shedler property." So with that, you know, I hope that the outcome of this review by the New Jersey Department of Health provides some peace of mind as to the health risks for those who were concerned. And this conclusion by the Department of Health is consistent with the findings that Matrix has reported to the village based upon these exceedances since the start of this project.
Anybody else? Thank you both so much. You come up here frequently, regularly, and we appreciate your help in cleaning up our property and making sure it's very good.
And with that, Mayor, from the council, are we comfortable with the proposal that Matrix has submitted? I don't know if there's any questions on the, the proposal. But again, this will take us, this will, a word of contract for Matrix's services from tonight through the conclusion of the project and the paperwork, the closeout documents that would need to be submitted to the DEP.
Any questions or issues on that proposal? We're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
And now we can go to public comment. Is, is that on?
Green light.
There you go.
Cynthia O'Keeffe, Ridgewood resident. I had a couple of questions. I see under policy for this evening, there's the establishment of the History and Cultural Center of Bergen County at the Zabriskie Shedler House and partnerships with Ridgewood Library and Bolger Heritage Center and the Ridgewood Historical Society. So I guess this was proposed and discussed on July 21st in front of the Historic Sites Council and the State Historic Preservation Office. So I guess my question would be, why wasn't there a resolution passed in advance of making a proposal? And were there agreements with, I guess, A, Bergen County, the library, and the Bolger Center, and the Historical Society in advance? Did the boards all approve this plan? Who from the county specifically is involved? Because in my conversations with a few people who are part of Bergen County Historic Society, they know nothing about this. So those are my questions. And then, Chebon, you and I have been trading emails. I didn't get a chance to respond during the day. But again, I'll ask, we wanted, neighbors would like to know who are living close to the property line at Shedler. And it doesn't have to be you necessarily, but I am not equipped to take my camera and zoom in on the plan and find out how many feet are the public bathrooms to each of those residential homes? That's all we want to know. How many feet? And will there be permanent lighting? Will that bathroom be locked at night? We're concerned about vagrancy and vandalism of our homes. I think that's a valid concern. Nobody's told us any of these details, and I don't think anybody wants to live next to a public restroom. Maybe we'll take a poll at the end of this meeting. I certainly don't. So simple answer, I think, right? And I've asked nicely several times, so I'd really like an answer to that. Maybe not tonight, but in writing. You have my email. And those are my questions for the current moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Michael Noe, Ridgewood resident. I had a couple of questions. I wasn't planning on talking about Shedler, but I was just curious, how many truckloads or tons or whatever measurement is of dirt are they removing approximately from the Shedler property? Number two, how much will that cost the taxpayers? And number three, are they planning on bringing in more dirt to fill in? I think she said they're digging down two to four feet in some spots. And are they going to put a berm up? So that was topic number one. What I'm really here to talk about is the proposed, it was at the planning board meeting, the last two planning board meetings, and they were going to rezone one of the properties between Franklin and Marshall Streets. It's just like an overwhelming project. They compare it to the building across the street, which is 50 feet tall. This proposed building is going to be 56 feet tall, and it's going to be, I don't know how many elevator structures on top of that, which could bring it to a maximum of 71 feet tall, which to me seems overwhelming. They're also reducing, eliminating the entrance on Maple, and they're going to have all the traffic go down the side streets. I know the mayor was at the first planning board meeting, and I know the deputy mayor was at the second one, but it just seems like a bad idea. I know they're trying to work on the affordable housing problem. The first number I heard is that we owe something like 1,000 something units. And then at the last meeting, the planner mentioned 427. And then somehow it got down to four is the requirement. But this project only has 12 affordable units. It just seems like an overly massive project for that little tiny property. And I don't know how you would get ambulances, delivery trucks, what you would do. There were a lot of comments, the deputy mayor was there, about what are you going to do when the parade happens, the Fourth of July Memorial Day run, the kids with the baseball? So anyway, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Boyd, a loving Ridgewood taxpayer. Like Mr. Noe, I also had a question because soil replacement was not mentioned during the presentation that we just heard. We talked about soil removal, but there was nothing mentioned about soil replacement. You're going to dig down between two and four feet in a large area. Where are we going to get the soil from to replace that? Or is it just going to be a lower area on the property than the rest of the property? And if we are going to get soil from someplace, what steps are we going to take to ensure that we don't do this all over again? That is, we got soil the last time, someone said it was clean, and it was not. Is the same thing going to happen to us again when we start bringing in truckloads of soil from someplace that it is not tested properly and we wind up doing this all over again a few years from now? So again, no mention whatsoever was made about soil replacement during the presentation that was given a few moments ago. I am also puzzled because when we talked about, or when you talked about the town garage and the Walnut Street property, people started asking questions about what is going to go specifically where the town garage was. And the answer was, we don't know because we have to wait two years for the property to be monitored before we can figure out what we can build there. However, tonight, Mr. Mayor, you asked, when can we start building? And the answer was, right away. I am puzzled by how we would wait two years on Walnut Street and the town garage property before we can do anything, but yet tonight, this gentleman indicated that as soon as I sign off on the project, you're good to go. Doesn't make any sense to me, so I'd appreciate some clarity on that. When can buildings start there? Do we need to monitor the property for a period of time? Or is somebody going to sign a document and say, we did the soil removal, you're good to go, now everything is okay? So if you could just clarify that, I'd appreciate. is okay? So if you could just clarify that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Boyd. Anyone else?
Kathy Noe. I attended the meeting last night also with the planning board.
Kathy, if you could speak up just a little bit and into the mic, you really, unfortunately, we have to get close to the mic, so.
I attended the meeting with the planning board last night, and there was a lot of intelligence, good comments from the public. Not only people who live in the area of the proposed assisted living, which I feel is too big and does not belong in Ridgewood, especially in downtown Ridgewood. It's ridiculous. But the comments are very important for the safety of the kids and for the residents, and as my husband stated, what's going to happen to our parade? Because that building is going to say, you cannot close these streets because we may need an ambulance. And rightly so, people in the assisted living may need an ambulance. But what is that going to do to our town, our traditions? I feel it's important. We have a wonderful, fabulous town. I grew up here. I came back because of everything. Another topic is, when we spend money, Ridgewood was always known for a town with services. Our town, our trees got cut down. We have a paid fire department. God bless that we have them. My daughter's house was saved because of them. It's important to keep up our town. I left messages to the, I guess it's the rec department, about the trees on Pleasant and East Ridgewood Avenue. Other residents did the same about the two trees that were dead. One of the branches fell on a car earlier in the year. I finally wrote, I guess, the head of the tree department, and the trees did come down. It's important that these things get done, so no one is hurt or killed. That's part of our services. The other matter I want to bring up is Ho School, the area in the neighborhood with the sidewalks that they've marked on Pleasant Avenue on the west side, which, that's fine, but then they're also proposing a bicycle lane on North Pleasant, or South Pleasant, excuse me. All of the parents park on the east side. When there's a bicycle lane there, are those parents still going to be able to park there? Because traffic at school times is horrendous. The school buses come through the neighborhood, through the lawns. Years ago, they did not, because of safety to the kids riding their bikes or walking or that kind of thing. But for years now, they have come through. But if they have to put a bicycle lane in, perhaps on the other side of the street, there's a curve on the other side of the street which throws cars towards the east side. And I think, you know, you want to have the cars parked on the east side, as it is right now. That's where most of the sidewalks are. You're not going to be able to put sidewalks on the west side because they have walls right near the street. And also, all of these things that you've brought, I'm over time, I'm sorry. It's in the summer. We're hearing about this proposed building. What was the other thing? There were several things on the agenda tonight that every, a lot of people are away on vacation. This is not the time. I've talked to some people. They know nothing about this building that's being proposed. And also, I heard that people have met from the council with the person who wants to build this building. We don't owe them anything. We are the town of Ridgewood, and we have a right to say no. I know there's, could be legal issues and that kind of thing.
Kathy, I'm just going to ask you to finish up.
Okay. The, anyway, that's it. I just feel that we need to step back and take time to make these big decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Seeing no one, we're going to go to hybrid access. Susan, you're up.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi. All right, Susan Luann, I'm a Ridgewood resident. I'm, I feel like a persistent bug, but I'm going to ask about the footbridge. What is the status for that? I know there was an aim in September. Is that still happening? I mean, we haven't seen anyone here to try to prep the footbridge, so what exactly is happening with that? And also, I don't know if Matrix is still in the building, but I would like to know what the difference between Orchard and Sheddler is. Because when there was a contamination cleanup at Orchard School, that field couldn't be used for several years after the cleanup for additional testing. And I remember hearing that, you know, the soccer community or the sports community was down one field because Orchard wasn't being able to be used. Why is Sheddler different than Orchard? And why is that going for immediate building when Orchard had to say, say, you know, empty till the additional testing was done? That was just something if Matrix can clear it up. All right, thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Susan. Seeing no one else, I'm going to close public comment.
Mayor, if I may.
For responses.
Cynthia, I will respond about the Historic and Cultural Center of Bergen County during my report, if that's okay? Because I have a long agenda, and I don't want to have to be redundant and keep people here later than need be. I can tell you that all of our public restrooms are locked overnight, and that they would be at Sheddler as well. So I want to make that piece clear. Mr. Noe, we do not know as of yet how much soil, as far as quantity goes, will need to be removed. That's what that last bit of testing is going to require in that pink area that was shown on the illustration, to determine what that perimeter will be for that tan area. And when Matrix comes back here with that final report, that will determine the quantities that will need to be removed from the site. With regard to costs, council has appropriated $1.5 million to remediate that property. I will tell you, that's a very intimidating number, and I will acknowledge that. However, we do have some recourse in trying to recruit some of the funds, and that's just the amount that was estimated for this year's capital budget. Again, until the report comes back from Matrix with actual quantities, and then we go out to bid and get that number from a contractor, we won't know for sure. We have every intention of filing an insurance claim with the, through the Bergen GIFT, with the environmental GIFT on this issue. And we also have started to pursue an avenue where we can, we may be able to acquire DEP grants for cleanup of sites like this in order to recruit some of those funds to the taxpayer. There is not currently included in the plan, that's been presented to the Historic Sites Council, a new berm. However, I have gone down to Ewing, New Jersey, to the headquarters for the New Jersey Department of Transportation, to have conversation with the chief of staff down there, and with the assistant commissioner, about what the appropriate barrier would be if a park were approved there. So those conversations with the DOT to make sure that safety is ensured are ongoing. With regard to soil replacement, and this answers both your question and Mr. Loving's question, we don't know that as of yet. We won't have a better handle on what that site's going to become until after the Historic Sites Council meeting on August 21st, and the subsequent decision by the assistant commissioner of the DEP on the park development proposal. So once we know if the park is approved, that will be determinative as to how that site is restored after soil removal occurs. With regard to the soil testing policy, Mr. Loving, I can tell you that since this issue has come to light, we have revised our policy. No soil is removed in the Village of Ridgewood without being tested. We do not restore, we do not relocate soil without it being properly tested. Bill Birwas, who's our superintendent at the water, at the Ridgewood Water, knows full well, he's got a very good relationship with the testing companies, so much so that we've actually tested the soil that was dug up out here on Veterans Field during the field lighting project. So we have a very tight policy when it comes to soil testing for any soil that is excavated on any village property. With regard to town garage, I just want to correct what you said. What was stated during the town garage issue was that we needed to have two years of testing. That testing is the responsibility of the prior property owner. I did not say that any decision about the property would have to wait two years. I believe what I said was, it would require us to do two rounds of testing, get those results from the LSRP to see which, what the results proved out, and then we would be able to have discussion about the future of the town garage property. So I expect that to start sometime at the end of this year, if not during quarter one of 2026. And with the guidance of Laura Clifford, who's our LSRP on that project, she'll be able to guide the council on what would be appropriate to be placed on that property in the future.
Keith, while you're on that, is it, am I correct in saying that there was water contamination?
So it is, it is completely different than what happened at Sheddler.
Right.
This is, this is, there were, I mean, it used to be called Franklin Ave, used to be called Gasoline Alley, I believe, at least that's what I've been told. There's an underground plume on those two properties, both the Walnut Lot and the town garage property. Very different than soil being carted in from various locations. Two different bureaus within the DEP. Sheddler is overseen by the Bureau of Solid Waste. Town Garage and the adjoining parking lot are overseen by the remediation folks down at the DEP. So completely apples and oranges when it comes to what those bureaus require when you're remediating either of those properties. To Miss Noe, first of all, I want you to know that from the day I walked into this building as a village manager, there was a memo that went out, and it is well-known by every employee here that priority one is responding to every resident inquiry. And if there is ever a situation where you are not getting adequate response, I want you to bring that to my desk. That is a priority. It was something that I enacted immediately upon arriving, and if there's ever someone who's not responding to you within 24 to 48 hours, I want to know about it. Okay? With regard to the summer agenda items, I believe that Beth McManus, our affordable housing planner, may have addressed this issue at last night's planning board meeting, but I can tell you that this, the village did not set up the schedule for what requirements are, need to be met when it comes to affordable housing. When Beth makes her presentation tonight, she can get a little bit more in-depth on that, but we had a deadline back in February. We had to submit our plan in June, and we have deadlines for consideration of ordinances that support our affordable housing obligation. So I agree with you. It's, you know, I don't think any of us really want to be here talking this deeply about affordable housing in the middle of the summer, especially when people are away. But that is not a decision that the village gets to make. That is, that is a decision that the state imposed on all the municipalities throughout the state of New Jersey as far as these deadlines go. And to Susan, I actually had a meeting today with Chris Rudzhauser about the footbridge. Tentatively, we are still dated for it to return in the month of September. I asked him to press the contractor because my patience on restoring the footbridge at the end of Kigsbridge Lane is wearing very thin. We were told originally that this was going to be done in May. There were some change orders. Things happen, I understand that. But I want this back in place this fall, especially in light of the fact that the cross-country team uses this. It's, it's an accessway to the other side of the Saddle River, and I told Chris specifically today to let this contractor know that my patience is wearing thin on this project. And finally, with regard to Orchard versus Sheddler, similar answer to the town garage. These are two different, two different treatment options when it comes to remediation. The soil at Sheddler was brought there. I can't speak too in-depth to what happened at Orchard, but I do believe it's, it's two different bureaus within the DEP that regulate how these sites are remediated. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I want to add, go ahead, Pam, first.
With regard to the bike lane that would be painted on South Pleasant, I don't think that's happening anytime soon because paving hasn't begun. I do see there are markouts there. I can't quite remember which side of the street it's going to be painted on, but the bike lane, but when we were talking about it here in council, the question did come up that you asked, where do the bikers go if there are parked cars? Well, they have to bike around the parked cars, was the answer.
Matt?
I'm going to respond similarly. The bike lane came from the AP students at the high school, and the goal was to be, reduce the amount of traffic. It connects haws, five schools together, and they felt with Valley leaving, it would be safer for biking. So a group of three women presented it, and they, you know, if someone's parked in the bike lane, the bike being part of moving traffic will go around it. With respect to Orchard, the remediation there, it was coal contamination. It's part of an owned property. My kids went to Orchard, so we too got all those notices. They went with a totally different level of remediation called capping, so they added soil on top. So there's about 18 inches of extra soil where we're doing remediation of excavating and removing it. I did want to, Cynthia, I'm not sure, I didn't see anything, but I want to, there's this back and forth with the details of the future Sheddler plan. So we, the bathrooms will be locked at night as the site plan progressed. It will be the same as our parks with regular lighting. There'll be safety lighting at night so the police can see into it. It'll be just like all of our other parks. We do not have lights, field lighting in the plan. That was removed as a concession. And with respect to the interpretation of the map, for anybody, there seem to be questions of how far things are in the park. There is a scale on the lower left-hand side of the map where you can read any distance regarding anything. Should you need help in reading a map, we can have, our library offers technical classes, and we can do that. But that way, everybody can answer every question drawing on the same thing. The bathroom, is that an angle? And the property is at an angle? So there'll be different, different houses will have different distances to each of the amenities of the park. So anybody who's having trouble with that, we can go to the library, and we can go to how to read the map. But the ratio is one inch on the scale equals 30 feet, and that way you'll be able to self-serve and self-monitor any questions you have about how far something is in the project. And lastly, with the tree removal, ditto what Keith said. We take it very seriously. We have $60,000 in our capital budget for hazardous tree removal. If you don't get a response, we'd love to, you know, take it up as quickly as possible, and we'll make sure it's responded to.
Anybody else?
Can I say something in response to Boyd's question about how much soil will be removed at Sheddler? In the berm, it's 10,000, they're approximating in the report, 10,000 cubic yards, and in the non-berm area, they're estimating 7,000 cubic yards. And then there would be backfill.
Yeah, and Boyd, as far as why we have to wait two years for, for the Franklin Avenue property, contamination of water, as Keith said, is completely different than contamination of soil. That must be tested for two years before we can do anything on that property. So.
Mayor, I just want to stress that what the deputy mayor just recited, which I appreciate, those are estimates. The key word there is estimate, because this is all subject to change based on what the perimeter of that removal area is going to be.
And as, and as, and as Matrix said tonight, they have to submit a soil removal plan, which they have not yet done. So these estimates are exactly that now. They'll have a better handle once they've complete testing.
Right. They, they determine what they think the removal area is going to be, but the final word sits with the Bureau of Solid Waste down at.
Right. And with that, let's move on. Let's go to your manager's report. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to extend my deepest condolences to the family and the entire Ridgewood community on the loss of cadet Neil Adara. Truly a tragic loss, and we will certainly keep his family in our thoughts and prayers. Tax bills should be mailed out within the next week, and the grace period will be extended until September 2nd. I want to point out that we did not send out estimated tax bills this year. This is the second year that we did not send out estimated tax bills, because the cost of spending, sending out two bills is approximately $9,300 each mailing. So we have a cash flow system in place so that we can avoid sending out and doing two mailings. And I want to thank Bob Bruni, our CFO, and his team in the finance office for making sure that we're in a position not to take on that additional expense. The 2024 annual audit is on the agenda for discussion tonight. I again want to thank Bob and his team in the finance office. There were only four recommendations this year, two of which deal with older capital accounts, which we are already under review, and we intend to ask the village council to authorize the cancellation of certain unused capital accounts before the end of this year. With regard to flooding and the field restoration, we again experienced. With regard to flooding and the field restoration, we again experienced a flood event on July 14th. Our OEM and communications team did a good job in alerting residents of the potential for flooding and alerted homes to prepare in the floodplain area. The good news is that there was no substantial impact on residential homes. The bad news is, is that Maple Field was once again flooded. The village secured quotes for restoration and contracted with Sports Care at a cost of just over $24,000. The field was reopened after restoration on July 25th, and we are pursuing an insurance claim to cover some of those costs. The Historic Sites Council meeting was held on July 21st. The village made a presentation on the Shedler Park Development Project. The hearing extended until 5:00 PM that day and has been carried over till August 21st. The public hearing will continue on that date, and the Historic Sites Council will deliberate the proposed resolution and make their decision and recommendation. It should be noted that if the Assistant Commissioner at the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection does not make a decision on this project by the 120th day after the application was deemed technically complete, which that 120th day is August 27th, an automatic project approval is granted. In early July, it became clear to the village that finding a suitable tenant for the Zabriski Shedler House, which complemented the historic nature of the house, was not attainable. We began intensive discussions at the staff level about having the village manage the house, and we landed at creating the history and cultural center of Bergen County at the Zabriski Shedler House. In partnership with the Bolger Center at the Ridgewood Public Library and the Ridgewood Historical Society, we would create a place of learning, growth, and activity at the house. I'm pleased that we have a resolution endorsing the partnership and the plan from the trustees of the Ridgewood Public Library, and a letter committing to the partnership from the Ridgewood Historical Society. We will be further discussing the plan later in tonight's agenda, but we are excited about this opportunity as the opening would be planned in conjunction with the 250th anniversary of the nation in 2026. The village received notice from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection on July 24th that the Response Action Outcome, also known as an RAO, was filed by Matrix with regard to soil excavation that was required at Habernickel Park. The Habernickel Park project is now closed out. The sign has been removed, and DEP is satisfied with the outcome. During our budget season, there were questions regarding the former Valley Hospital site being traditionally taxed. There were concerns expressed about unpaid taxes and how that would affect the 2025 municipal budget. Tonight I can report that on June 17th, the Valley Healthcare System paid $2.4 million towards their 2024 delinquency. The balance of $1.9 million for 2024 was sold at tax sale on July 18th. The lien holder bought the tax sale certificate at a rate of 18%. On Tuesday of this week, the lien holder also paid the first two quarters of the 2025 unpaid taxes in the amount of $2.7 million. That makes the village whole currently regarding the property taxes on the old hospital campus. I just want to say that this is the formal legal process outlined by statute when it comes to unpaid taxes and delinquencies, and the village has treated Valley Healthcare System just as they would any other property owner in the village if they fell behind on their property taxes. With regard to the high school bus shelter project, there has been some inquiry as to the status of the approved bus shelter at Ridgewood High School. We've been shaking the trees, as they say, down at New Jersey Transit with regard to this, and our point of contract, point of contact, I'm sorry, at New Jersey Transit has indicated multiple times that they are currently bidding out to get a new bus shelter vendor. This has been the response for several months, and on Tuesday of this week, I elevated the request to the senior leadership team at New Jersey Transit in hopes of finally getting this done. I want to stress that all the required steps with having this shelter installed at Ridgewood High School and all the approvals that need to be granted by the village, the county, and the Board of Education are in place. This is exclusively on Transit to deliver the bus shelter at this point. Speaking of bus shelters, I'm very pleased to report that the village received notice from the New Jersey Department of Transportation Commissioner, Francis O'Connor, of $147,000 grant for the new bus station at Van Ness Square. This will include the new shelter, benches, landscaping, and security cameras. I want to thank Councilmember Winograd, who really pushed this project, along with our legislative representative Senator Kristin Carrato, Assemblyman Krista Phillips, and Assemblyman Al Barless for their advocacy in securing these funds. On a personal note, I also want to thank New Jersey Department of Transportation Chief of Staff, Chris Scales, who I pestered personally quite a bit over the last year about this project. It was truly a team effort, and we look forward to getting a shovel in the ground later this year to build the bus shelter. Finally, our summer infrastructure projects are in full swing. Road improvements on Hammond Road, Bel Air Avenue, and North Van Dean at the intersection of Overbrook are ongoing. This week, work on the roundabout at Hermance and Beverly has started near Ridgewood High School. We anticipate that the sidewalk work on West Glen Avenue will start in the new, in the next few weeks as well. On the recreation side, the Somerville tennis courts are also being resurfaced, and we will be moving over to the Glen Tennis Courts sometime this fall. Mayor, just have a few announcements from Ridgewood Water. Just a reminder that two-day-per-week irrigation schedule is in effect. Odd-numbered addresses for irrigation are Tuesday and Saturday, and even-numbered addresses for irrigation are Wednesday and Sunday. No irrigation is allowed on Monday, Thursday, or Friday, and please remember, if it's raining, to turn off your system. Ridgewood Guild sponsors music on Friday nights through Labor Day downtown. There's also summer concerts on Saturday evenings from 7:00 PM to 9:30 PM at Van Ness Square through the end of August. The Ridgewood Guild is sponsoring free movies in the park on Wednesday nights at 9:00 PM at Van Ness Square. The Summer Concert Series at Cash Shaw Shell continue through the end of August. The final performance for the season will take place on August 21st. The Ridgewood Chamber of Commerce continues to sponsor their Farmer's Market on Sundays through the end of October at the train station on the west side. And upcoming village council meetings, August 13th is our public meeting, September 3rd is a work session, September 10th is a public meeting, September 24th is a work session. All begin at 7:30 PM. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Keith. We will go to council reports, and council, as you see, we have a packed agenda. I ask that you hit the highlights. Frank, start it off.
Open space meeting. We talked about the upcoming referendum. That concludes my report.
He's setting a good example. Siobhan, can you keep up with that?
I really can't.
I know.
Because I too attended the open space meeting, and because we have members of the public, it's an exciting time to be a voter in Ridgewood. We, as a council, have placed a public question for the public to decide whether you want your dedicated open space tax to go from one half of one cent to one cent. It's exciting. We've not asked this question, I think, since my first was born, a very long time, and this is a good thing that will allow us to buy more public parkland and improve the existing parklands. Remember to vote and look at the question. It's a public question. It'll be at the bottom of the local ballot. Thank you to Open Space for having me. I want to take a brief moment to just thank our professional staff, Keith included, Keith, Heather, Matt, Suburban, and say that the SHPO application hearing was exciting, interesting, and I was super proud to be on the Ridgewood team and see the delivery that encapsulated all elements of park development, most especially the house. It was nice to see the house finally have its day in the sun. It's a $2.6 million asset, and I was very grateful to be a part of that and be a part of the team. If you, anybody wishes to speak on the 21st of August, we would welcome it, you know, any which way you want to go. Public participation is incredibly important. And lastly, the Fields Meeting in August has been postponed to September, so I know we said we were going to have a special one, but we're not. That's no longer true. Everybody decided to ride summer out a little bit more. So, thank you. That's it.
That was pretty good, I have to say. All right. Pam?
Most of my committees have not met. However, as some of the speakers mentioned, the planning board met last night, and our affordable housing consultant, Beth McManus, explained the, the ordinance that was introduced that describes the S1 overlay for property on, on Maple Avenue at the corner of Franklin and Marshall. And there were many people who came last night. I'd say the chairs were pretty much full, and there were many questions, and Beth did a great job fielding them. Chris Rudis-Hauser, our village engineer, also answered questions. And everybody was very invested and, and paying attention and participating, so I thank everybody who came. And that's all I have.
Great. And you'll forgive me, I forgot something very, very important, and Keith reminded me. A couple weeks ago, we lost a son of our village, Neil Adara, in the line of duty. He was an ROTC graduate, or he was graduating ROTC, and he was in basic training in Fort Knox, Kentucky, and he died during basic training. He was also a volunteer in our ambulance corps, and he devoted his life to service that sets a standard for every single one of us. And we laid him to rest this past weekend, and so I will ask for us all to participate in a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you all so much. And so, we will go to our regular agenda, and forgive me, I'm going to jump the line with Beth McManus and our affordable housing options, because she has a very long drive home tonight. So Beth, would you come up? And for those of you who are following, she will be addressing items 13E, 1 through 5. Good evening, Beth.
Good evening.
Hi, Beth.
Okay. I'm sorry, I left the agenda at my chair. Is there a particular order you'd like me to take the ordinance?
No, you can just follow through. I actually have an extra agenda, if you'd like to have it somewhere here in my debris.
Here, I have it here.
Okay, thank you very much. Then let's take these ordinances, unless the council has a different preference as listed on your agenda, and that means the first ordinance is the development fee ordinance. And I'm sorry, folks, behind me, I'm going to try to speak right into the microphone. So this first ordinance is an amendment to an existing ordinance here in the village that regulates the collection of development fees and the village's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Development fees are a type of fee applied to new development that is authorized in New Jersey for municipalities that participate in the affordable housing process. The purpose of that money collection is solely to expend it for affordable housing purposes in, in a variety of ways. And so what this ordinance does is it amends the applicability of the fees that are, are applied to residential development. Right now, the village ordinance applies development fees in the amount of 1.5% of the assessed value of either a new home, if that's what's being constructed, or perhaps the increase in assessed value if, let's say, it's an addition, a new bedroom to a home. That fee is assessed by the village and then collected from the homeowner or the developer. And that is applied to essentially any new residential development. That does not include an affordable housing project. So if you're building, let's say, one or maybe two new single-family homes, if you're building a new addition on your home, this development fee would currently be applied. What this ordinance amendment does is it re, it reduces the applicability such that this residential development fee is only applied to creation of new units. So a new home, or perhaps taking an existing building and creating additional homes within it, so perhaps taking a, a single-family home and creating two or maybe three units, a development fee would be applied to that. It would no longer apply the fee to a residential addition. So if you're building a bedroom, as the example I've given, the fee would no longer be applicable. And I, I do want to highlight for new home construction, if the existing home was destroyed by natural events such as a, such as a fire, the fee, it does not apply in this ordinance, and it actually does not apply today. But I just want folks to be clear, for those that lost their home from fire, the fee would not be applicable.
Great. Thank you so much. Questions? Anybody? Good, let's go.
Okay. Next, we have the ordinance referred to as the TO-1 Overlay District. This is for a property on Gothel Road. It's actually 299 Gothel, and it applies to this particular property. This is in service of our Affordable Housing Plan. We are obligated to adopt ordinances that implement the, the affordable, your housing plan that was adopted by the planning board earlier this year. This site is one of those mechanisms, and so what it does is it takes this existing property, which is currently in your R2 district, and it creates a new overlay zone for that property, meaning that the existing zoning remains, or alternatively, a developer could use the overlay district to do something different. This particular overlay district permits single-family attached homes, townhomes, single-family detached homes, and then a variety of accessory uses that you would expect to see, such as parking, amenity spaces, et cetera. It includes track development standards for the townhomes, as well as any single-family homes, provides buffers to the surrounding residential uses, in fact, larger setbacks where there is an adjacent residential use, and regulates the district in, in a similar manner to how Ridgewood does things in the sense of providing bulk standards, FAR, building height, et cetera. And most importantly, it also provides an affordable housing set aside so that we can gain affordable housing credit and have this ordinance approved as part of our housing plan.
And forgive me if you're jumping in, FAR, you mean floor area ratio?
Yes, thank you.
For those unfamiliar with the acronym.
Yes.
Great. Questions?
The only question, Beth, because we have members of the public, can you just loosely describe what an overlay is, that people like, and maybe use Valley, because people don't understand how something that's not built, not applicable now is going to be, just to...
Sure. So an overlay zone is, it's a type of zoning designation for a property, and it exists as an option to a developer or, or the property owner. And it essentially allows for the existing zoning to remain in place, so the property is developed pursuant to the R2 district today. It could be redeveloped pursuant to the R2 district, but in the alternative, the developer or the property owner could utilize this overlay zone instead. And so they must select one or the other. You can't cherry pick the best of both worlds, so to speak.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Um, forgive me, but I don't see the property identified here by block or lot number or by address.
It's 299.
I know it's 299.
I can, if, I can certainly add that in there. I can add that in there. Sorry about that. That is an oversight. I'll say for the record once more, it is 299 Gothel Road.
Good. Anybody else? Let's go.
Okay. Next, we have an ordinance addressing the B1 and B2 districts. This is an ordinance that amends the inclusionary housing standards of the B1 and B2 districts, and the distinction I'm making there is your ordinance already has a variety of standards in place for, for development that does not include affordable housing. It might be commercial uses and residential uses above, or perhaps simply just commercial uses. It includes a provision that where inclusionary development is proposed, inclusionary is defined as a mix of market rate and affordable units, there are certain flexibility granted in order to encourage the affordable housing to be created. Right now, the ordinance, this, let me say it this way, this ordinance amends... Right now, the ordinance, let me say it this way, this ordinance amends two, really three aspects of the B1 and B2 district. First, it states that any affordable housing in the district that is being created, any developer that seeks to utilize the additional flexibility, must do a 20% set-aside of affordable housing. And that's a change from the existing ordinance that currently requires a 15% set-aside where rental housing is being developed, or a 20% set-aside where sale housing is being developed. This ordinance would revise that and require 20%, regardless of whether they're for rent or for sale units. Additionally, the ordinance also increases the floor area ratio for inclusionary developments up to 250%, an increase from 75%. And what these two items are intended to do is, first and foremost, implement our housing plan, and to encourage, better encourage, the creation of affordable housing. This, as well as the district I just described for Gothel Road, as well as the other districts I'll describe this evening, are all set forth in our housing plan. We are therefore obligated to adopt ordinances that implement them. The FAR here will go up in a way that will better match the existing conditions, and importantly, better match or better encourage the affordable housing that the housing plan seeks to take credit for. The final change in the ordinance is more of an administrative change. It specifies the affordability controls that are now applicable pursuant to the new Fair Housing Act, so that's simply an update to reflect the Fair Housing Act.
Good. Questions? Let's go.
Okay. And then last, we have the CR-1 district. This is a new district, here we go. This is a new district for the Chestnut Street area. It is along Chestnut Street, between, excuse me, yeah, between Robinson, north to the apartments located at the northern end of Chestnut, essentially from, and excluding the Chestnut Village apartment building, for those that might be familiar, and extending north. It also excludes the YMCA. And so what this district would do, again, it would implement the housing element in the sense that the zoning would be amended from what is the C district, your commercial district, to permit mixed-use inclusionary development. The existing uses in the C district would continue to be permitted almost entirely, and then it would permit multifamily housing above, consistent with many of the new mixed-use developments in much of the village. There are a variety of development standards set forth, such as setbacks. There is a maximum density of 30 units an acre, and I should note that that is less than the Chestnut Village development directly adjacent. There is a maximum building height of 45 feet, and then a variety of front, rear, side-yard setbacks, et cetera, that are applicable to the district.
Questions?
And I'm sorry, I should say there's also, of course, in case it's not obvious, a 20% set-aside for affordable housing.
So this one is not an overlay. This one, we're adding uses.
Correct.
Permissible uses. And I appreciate the sensitivity to the nearby homes and reducing the height allowances. So I thought that was very sensitive.
Yeah, there are a few aspects in here that I've tried to acknowledge and account for the residences to the rear of Chestnut, to the east of Chestnut.
Thank you.
And let's finish it up.
The last ordinance, I'm sorry, I think I said this was the last ordinance, but there's one more, it's referred to as the mandatory set-aside ordinance. This is an ordinance that exists today in the village that is being amended to simply require an increased affordable housing set-aside. What this ordinance does is it states anytime, whether it's the zoning board of adjustment grants a use variance for multifamily housing where it's not currently permitted, should there be a rezoning from all of you, perhaps a redevelopment plan. If multifamily housing is permitted, there must be an affordable housing set-aside. It does not require that the approval be granted, but if it is, there must be a set-aside. Today, the ordinance requires a 15% set-aside for rental developments and a 20% set-aside for sale developments. This ordinance would simply require 20% across the board, regardless of whether it's for sale or for rent. The other change is it makes a similar administrative change, as opposed to, in this case, referencing the specific affordability controls, it simply states those controls must be consistent with the village ordinance. The distinction I'm making here from other ordinances is the mandatory set-aside ordinance is going to apply to a variety of projects, potentially a variety of housing types. And so it simply makes sense to point to village ordinance, which is going to be much more detailed and accommodate these different housing types.
Questions? Beth, thank you so much.
Mayor, through you, if I may.
By all means.
While we have Beth here, and I don't want to prolong an already anticipated long meeting, Beth, just to go back to the public comment, because I think this is an important discussion to have here in Ridgewood, right? We obviously have a lot of people who vacation for the summer, they're out of town in July and August. As I said in my remarks responding to the no's, you know, this is not a schedule that the village prefers to have to follow. So can you just add some color to what the state is requiring all the municipalities throughout New Jersey to do on this schedule?
I'd be happy to. Yeah, absolutely. This is not a schedule that the village created, and instead it was one that was put together as part of the Fair Housing Act and applies to every municipality.
It was imposed on us.
Yes, it was imposed on us. They've required that the municipality adopt a housing plan in very short order by July 30th. As part of that, and as part of the process, we are obligated to submit ordinances. They need to be submitted by the end of August, so that, to the extent that there are any objections raised about missing paperwork, this will not be included. We are obligated to submit these draft ordinances by that date so that we can confirm that we've submitted the necessary documents.
And that's inclusive of the assisted living ordinance that was discussed at last night, the planning board?
Absolutely.
In addition to the documents that you discussed here tonight?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, Mayor, through you, my only other question is, with regard to the ordinance on North Maple, when that was introduced by council back in July, Heather had an obligation as the village clerk to send out notification to the county planning board, to the adjoining municipalities, and to residents within 200 feet of the zone. With regard to what you discussed tonight, can you just go over the notification requirements with regard to any of these ordinances, so that expectations are set with public notification?
Sure. Very simply, that same notice requirement will apply to most of these ordinance. It will not apply to the development fee ordinance, it will not apply to the mandatory set-aside ordinance, because they're not zone-specific, but the other districts that I described, B1, B2, the TO-1, and the CR-1 district, all of those will require that very same notice when it is scheduled for public hearing.
So the three middle ordinances that you discussed, they will receive, once this is introduced by village council, they'll be referred to the planning board like the assisted living ordinance was. Heather will be obligated to send out notification within, adjoining property owners within 200 feet of the zone.
Yes, that is the legal requirement and process for a zoning ordinance, these will follow that process.
And by the way, zoning ordinances also need to be published in the newspaper, so I want to add that as well, both on introduction and adoption.
Yes, and it needs to be sent to a few other state agencies, all of that will be complied with.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Mayor.
All good.
Beth, I'll need the blocks and lots in the ordinance, so that I can get the 200-foot list from the assessor.
Absolutely, I will provide that in the next few days.
Okay, thanks.
Good. Beth, thank you so much.
Paul, I just want to say, because this is always, housing always becomes a sensitive issue.
It's okay.
So while you're here, and the public watches this, so an ordinance has two readings, so the one in North Maple was introduced approximately 30 days ago. Its second reading will be with us next Wednesday. The first introduction, because this is a workshop, of these will be first read next Wednesday as well. So people in Ridgewood, you know, this is, I mean, I'm new here, two years new, the ordinance, people get confused as to how it travels that path. So I just want to make sure, what we discussed tonight will have its first reading next Wednesday, and what we discussed in July regarding the North paper will have its second and final reading next Wednesday.
However, to just add a wrinkle, in between introduction and adoption, it makes a stop-off at the planning board, which started in July on the assisted living ordinance and carried over till last night. But then the planning board has 35 days to report back to the council. We're likely not to have that report by next Wednesday. So while there'll be a public hearing on this ordinance next week, that will likely be extended till September.
It will definitely be extended until September, because we have represented that to the neighborhood. So it will continue to September, which means we will be in violation of our requirement to get it in by the end of August.
Thank you for the clarity. I did not think there was going to be the final public hearing next Wednesday, so that's helpful.
However, that hearing is going, as the mayor said, being careful with my words here, but to the mayor's point, it's going to be extended till September.
Yes.
Because it's not likely that the planning board is going to have their report sent back to council by August 13th.
Yes, that's my understanding.
And I don't think that type of an extension, to meet with the public and also take care of hearing back from the planning board, given the time periods of the regular meetings of the council and the board, is going to be a problem.
Good.
And just for the general public, ordinances have a two-step process, first and second reading. You guys went way too lawyerly, way too complicated again, because we'll be asked that question a lot.
Thanks, Beth.
My pleasure.
Run.
And don't look back. Thanks, Beth.
Have a good night, folks.
Thank you, you too. And now, we will get to the Special Improvement District Hearing Committee. Will all the people who are participating in this presentation, please join us at council tables?
So members of the Special Improvement District Steering Committee have been working on this project since late 2023, actually, under the guidance of Economic Development Strategists. Stuart Copperweiss is our consultant on that. And we have here tonight three of our steering committee members, Tom Hillman, owner of Hillman Electric, as was, and John Saracino, who is a property owner in town, and Glenn Carlo, who owns the Steel Wheel Tavern. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming here tonight. The purpose is to discuss the proposed ordinance, which is in your packets as ordinance number 4053. That was introduced on July 9th, and we will be bringing it back for a second hearing on August, our public meeting.
13th.
13th. Yeah, our public meeting in August this month. So I'll ask you to go ahead and speak to the ordinance.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council, deputy mayor, staff, and the public. Thank you again for the introductions. What I'd like to just say is that this is obviously the, not, I shouldn't say obviously, this is a culmination from the steering committee and the report that we put together over the last year and a half. And the recommendation and the adoption by the council of that report was to introduce an ordinance and create a special improvement district, and that's why we are here today, which is basically to review the improvement district. And I'm pushing someplace? No place? Next slide, please, I guess. Or is mine not working? I don't know.
There's a red dot on it.
And if that doesn't work, try pointing it. There you go.
Oh, there we go, okay. Oh, these are the members of the steering committee. Okay, great, which we went through, and some of those members are here in the audience with us as well. So with that, okay. Next slide, please. Okay, I guess I'm not doing the slides. So what is a special improvement district? Basically, it's based upon the state statute, you can read a few things on, in front of the screen in front of you right now, but it's modeled on the shared marketing and maintenance programs of many shopping centers. There's multiple property owners, business owners, they all align themselves collectively to plan for their own selfdestination of their future. It's self-governed, it's managed, and coordinated with the local government, with a seat at the table, supported by the strength of them in terms of the numbers. There's less than a, let's see, there are more than 100 improvement districts in the state of New Jersey, and the last two being Hoboken and Princeton being some of the newest. And one of the comments that I'd like to make, and I think I made this last time, is that in all over the country, and in the world, they are called business improvement districts. However, as we know, we are from New Jersey, so we are special, and therefore it is special improvement districts. Okay, next slide, please. These are some of the towns locally, it's based upon legislation that was enacted by the state in 1984, with Cranford establishing as the first improvement district. Operating budgets can range anywhere from $900,000 to over $6 million. Red Bank River Center was established in 1991, and the reason I bring that up is that because it is the Renaissance of Red Bank, because Red Bank used to be called Dead Bank many, many years ago. And now, with improvement district, it is now called a beautiful, wonderful home, as the Red Bank River Center. Next slide, please. Yes, and I believe that is?
Smith?
Yes, Glenn.
Hi. I'm Glenn Carlo, as previously stated, I own the Steel Wheel Tavern, I live right over there on Fairway Road.
Glenn, could you make sure your microphone's on? People can't hear you in the back.
Green light. I'm going to try that again.
So much better.
All right. Glenn Carlo, I own the Steel Wheel Tavern, I live on Fairway Road, and I'm also the president of the Ridgewood Chamber of Commerce. When we get to page seven, that will have some relevance, which is why I mentioned that. I will also say that I took a stab at writing the mission statement, and it was summarily rejected, so these words that I'm about to read are not mine, I don't recall who penned them, but they did a very nice job.
I believe they were penned by the entire committee. And they put a few words of yours in there as well.
Oh, okay. Well, I feel a little better now. The Ridgewood Business Alliance's mission is to energize and enhance the business environment of the village through marketing, branding, economic development, advocacy, and select capital improvements. It is committed to promoting and maintaining the village as a prime destination for visitors, residents, organizations, and businesses. Page six, please.
Next slide. Thank you.
We are extremely committed, when we talk about professional management, we are very committed to finding a tremendous and experienced director. We find that to be crucial, and we will do everything we can to locate that correct person. We talk about a seat at the table, the board of directors will be made up of stakeholders here in town, so that's business owners as well as landlords, and this is truly a partnership on behalf of the central business district. Substantial marketing, visual improvements, and we talk about moving Ridgewood to the next level. Look, we all think Ridgewood is great, right? And it is. We just don't want to be standing still, because if we're standing still, we're moving backward, and that's just not our style. Seven, please.
Next slide. Thank you.
The special improvement district will brand and market the village image, it will promote the small village's historic character. And this is a very important piece, because there were several of us from the chamber on the steering committee. I know Tony, right, is it behind me, Tony?
Here.
Excellent. And this is an important one. The special improvement district will partner with the Chamber of Commerce and the Ridgewood Guild, as well as other civic organizations, to support events and promote what they do. I can tell you this, I'm very proud of what the chamber does, and I admire tremendously what the guild does. I look forward to the improvement district's support. I know that it will do things that are just not in the chamber and guild's lane, and that's important. And so I'm excited about working with the improvement district as part of the Chamber of Commerce. We will, it will provide education and communicate parking locations for employees and visitors. I think it's been said recently, and I agree, Ridgewood doesn't have a parking problem, Ridgewood has a parking reputation problem, not enough people know where the garage is, and we can certainly solve that. Eight, please. Eight, please. The Alliance will anticipate research, plan for future trends to foster economic vibrancy through a retail market analysis. This is a significant undertaking. I will just say that from a Chamber of Commerce standpoint, this is not something that we could afford to do, either from a cost standpoint or from a time standpoint. So this is, this is big. Will provide landlord incentives to assist property owners to attract and retain tenants, introduce potential tenants to the village and to available leasing opportunities. We expect that the executive director will have a, a network in and beyond the state and be able to target those type of businesses that would potentially do well in Ridgewood. Of course, they'll survey the needs and concerns of existing businesses. And funding mechanisms, grants, government agencies, et cetera. We will expect that our executive director will either have grant-writing experience or will have someone on the team who will be able to write grants. It is important, and it is a must. Thank you.
Thank you. John Saracino, Ridgewood resident and property owner in town. The next point and touch point on the services that the Cid will provide, building on sort of the economic piece that Glenn spoke to. I, I think the most important piece of this is the bottom up, which is the RBA is not here to offset municipal costs and basically replace the council's responsibility. Its singular focus is the central business and the sort of responsibility of that. So its job will be to improve the streetscapes unilaterally and singularly focused on the improvement of that area for the purposes of facade upgrades, signage and lighting, pedestrian direction, and services support system, and a sounding board to improve the central business district and the businesses that operate there with a long-term plan to make sure that it continues to improve. Next slide. So how does it work? To Glenn's point, the single most important next step for us is, upon hopefully receiving approval and the support of the council, is to incorporate the board. The board will then select a manager, the purpose of which will be to execute the plan as outlined in the mission statement and the committee that arranged it. Committee members will volunteer support to the mission that we've outlined in the mission statement. And the hope is to make sure that all businesses, property owners and residents can participate to effectuate the goals of improving the central business district, both from a visual perspective as well as an economic and operational perspective. Next. So where and what makes sense for Ridgewood? So the entirety of the village of Ridgewood will obviously benefit from the creation of this special improvement district. So this will be a municipal central, special improvement district. There are different sort of categories of that, and different communities do it in different fashions as to how they do it. Princeton, you know, central business district for the Central Avenue, and then Jersey City just basically did a block with regard to the Exchange Place. But obviously, each community does it differently with regard to how they do it. We will incorporate the entirety of the area, and then there will be a sort of smaller, more focused approach to the area that encompasses the commercial district, where the funding sources will be identified, which Tom will speak to in a second, so that there is a consistent funding source to actually operate it. Next. So who's included in the Cid? Who makes up that commercial sort of funding source that supports it? From a tax class perspective and from a property use, it's 4A, which is all commercial and retail in the central business district and outside of it. There are two tiers that will be discussed that'll be the funding source. But as all that are included is you have the 4A. You have 4C, which are commercial residential units with four plus units that make up those residential units, so it's not single-family homes. And then 15F, bless you, is nonprofit tax exempt that were reclassified. So there are some 15F not-for-profit facilities that we incorporate in the overall scheme of the special improvement district as it relates to incorporating those properties in it. And with that, I will introduce our next speaker, Tom Hillman.
Hello, I'm Tom Hillman. I've been around here for about 45 years at Hillman Electric. But now I've retired into my properties of commercial and residential properties in Ridgewood. What you see here is a map of the Cid or the Ridgewood Business Alliance that would be, you've got a tier here, there's different tiers. You've got the tier one, which is kind of the bullseye. It's kind of the, the, the business area. Tier one, which, which has, we're figuring a 4% assessment on, on that, and 2% on a tier two, which would be outside of that area. And we're figuring the formulas are based on assessed value taxes paid and determined by the formulation process. So that's, that's, that's slide. So could I have another slide?
So the green area that's on the map, that's, that would be tier one that you're referring to, right?
Basically, it encompasses 355 properties at this point. It's 319 of the 4A, 29 of the 4C, and 15F is seven, to make up the 355 properties. So for clarification, on the map purposes, the tier one is the, is central business district itself, which is just a little expanded, and everything else is what we call outliers, and that'll be explained on the next slide, please. I think that went.
Okay.
No, I think we missed a slide.
Is that the next slide?
No, oh, I guess, I guess not, okay, sorry. Good. Nope, there's something missing.
Now we're on RBA governance, I believe. One page, one back.
One, one back one, please.
Okay.
Something missing.
Where'd that come from?
There's, there's.
There's two different maps.
I think this is the right slide. You're good.
Go ahead, we'll continue. Just continue, okay. RBA governance.
Yeah, it's you.
That's me. Okay, no wonder why, no wonder why I'm confused. It's me.
Go get him.
Right, RBA governance. Basically, it's the District Management Corporation is established as the operating entity by the village ordinance. What we're doing here today in terms of the ordinance itself, the things that are in the ordinance are basically recommend, the 4A, Bs, and Cs, all the properties that list at the 355 properties, they're known as Schedule A. They are all in the ordinance. All the other information in terms of tier one and tier two and the percentages are not in the ordinance. That is to be determined by the District Management Corporation itself, and that will then determine how the budget is put together, which will then come in front of the council for approval. And that's when the organization is fully functioning.
Thank, thank you for saying that, because I think that's an important point.
Yes, councilman.
In this presentation, it's recommendations, but there's not any final budgeting.
Right.
Like, it's like, to me, the 15F, the tax exempt, that that's a recommendation. We don't know how much that's actually going to play out.
Correct.
The board is set up.
Right. Well, again, what's in the ordinance are all the properties that will be associated in the village in terms of its Schedule A, in terms of all the properties together. That's the 355 properties in the actual ordinance in the improvement district. How they will be assessed, when they will be assessed, or the amount that will be assessed is determined by the organization itself, and they will then present a budget to the organ, to the council for approval.
And Stuart, just to pull stuff from when you were here before, when we talked about the findings.
Yes.
Can you talk about the board that'll be set up to help govern this?
Well, I believe we touched on it a little bit, but right now, it's, the board itself will be made up of, there will be a member of the governing body, and then it'll be property owners and business owners, a majority of which of the board should be property owners. And they'll be anywhere probably from 11 to 15.
And they will represent those different.
Areas within the, within the community, within the village itself. So there'll be people not only representative in terms of the tier one, which is the expanded CBD, but also the outlining areas as well. It should be representative of all of the village itself. Thank you, councilman.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. And then I guess, I'm sorry, I'm asking the question. I mean, so you're here from the chamber. Is the guild going to have a seat on, in the board?
Two of them are sitting in the back.
They, they.
Well, from our steering.
I would assume, I would assume that they would. What's going to happen is they're going to be, once this ordinance is adopted, we will then, we're filing right now for a certificate of incorporation. There'll be three incorporating officers. Those incorporating officers will then meet, and they will then put together, adopt bylaws, which, which will then state who is going to be on the improvement district. Again, the recommendation is being anywhere from 11 to 15 business property owners. And those will be public meetings as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you would have members of the council and a staff professional, right, on, on the board?
I'm sorry.
Members of the council, one member.
One member of the council by statute must be on the board. As far as members of the staff in terms of the, of the village itself, they will be coordinated with the village, which we have been doing already as well, thanking the tax assessors, the attorneys, and of course, the, the, the business manager and, and the clerk. But there's only one member.
The only councils come and go, so I, you know, maybe we could carve out a spot for the village manager, or.
Well, it's a one-year term.
Okay.
It's a one-year term for the village, for the council person, and every year that can change, obviously.
Something to think about. I think for the sake of continuity, we might want to have somebody who's not subject to an election, not as variable from our side.
Well, we're just, we're going, we're going in accordance with the state statute.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
I just want to send Keith to more meetings.
Continue, continue.
I'm sure Keith wants to, I'm sure Keith wants to get involved as much as he possibly could and come to the meetings every week, right, Keith?
Send me the calendar invite.
Stuart, continue.
All right, and conclusion, an improvement district, a Cid, is one of the most qualified mechanisms for local government and businesses to work together. It's self-determination, but being a collective destiny, and makes it possible for members of the community to control their own economic revitalization of the area. The next slide, and final slide is special improvement district. Success is our village. It's basically a mall without walls all over. And I want to thank again the steering committee for their time for almost two years of meeting diligently, these would be Zoom and in-person, and, and these meetings last anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half. And we've tackled a lot of different issues. Thank you.
I remember a couple of two-hour meetings, by the way, and I want to thank everybody here. I want to recognize steering committee members Stacy Tappasaris, Lisa Huss, Tony Damiano, who are, who are all involved in this. And let me tell you something, this was, every meeting was a discussion, was an analysis, was looked at closely and carefully. And, you know, I say it all the time, many hands make light work. The people on this committee spent a tremendous amount of time and effort and study to bring us to where we are today, and I am so impressed with every single one of them. I want to thank you all for all of your time and efforts.
And as I said, the, the second reading on this ordinance, which is 4053, will be August 13th.
Next Wednesday, right.
Yeah, so if anybody wants to come and speak to that ordinance, that's a good time to come. And so the public is welcome to throw in their two cents.
Anybody from the council have any additional questions? Gentlemen and ladies in the audience who all came to support this, we can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Safe home.
Thank you.
And how long is that drive? Because mine is long.
We, we got a few people who have a long drive tonight, so, and now I will call up Ridgewood Water staff so that we can do their portion of this.
Mayor Rich Calby is on vacation this week, so representing Ridgewood Water is Superintendent William Birwas, and our, from our engineering staff, Yolanda McCombe. They're going to present the 10 items that Ridgewood Water has on the agenda this evening. So I don't know, you had a lot of time to decide who was going first, so.
Okay.
Lonnie, you taking the lead here?
Yeah, I'll start.
Okay, go for it.
Good evening. Is my mic going?
You're good. Welcome, Lonnie and Bill. Thanks for being here tonight.
Sure, it's been good. So we have 10 items, like Keith said. The first one is the award of, I'm very excited about this one. We're finally awarding the lead service line replacements project, contract one. This will be the first of several contracts in a row where we're replacing all the lead and galvanized service lines in the, in our service area. And this one, we took bids on July 3rd, and we are recommending, after review of those bids, to award to the low bidder, Rayvax Contracting Corp., for an amount of $3,253,650.
Questions? Everybody good?
Yep.
Let's go.
All right. Number two is another award for the final raw water mains contract, contract number four. This one, we took bids on July 17th, and the low bidder is being recommended, which is MSP Construction Corp. in the amount of $5,933,933, and it's over 16,000 lineal feet of, of new raw water main to support.
Questions?
That's to connect the wells to the treatment plant, right?
Yes, mhm.
Lonnie, is this a PLA contract?
Yeah, if it's over, yes, that would be, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. The next one is a PFOs treatment facility award. We took bids for the mountain treatment facility, which is located in Wykoff. We took bids on Octo, on July 8th, and the low bidder is recommended is Coppola Services in the amount of $3,554,013. This one is ready to go. It's, 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 there's only one more to bid. We had a bid opening yesterday, and we'll have, of the 12 facilities, we only have one more to bid, and that will be next week. And so we're going to be running on all cylinders with these.
Very exciting.
All under construction at once, so.
Very exciting. Questions, anyone?
So mayor, just on that, and Rich is going to be mad at me because I didn't say this to him before the meeting, but I'm going to say it publicly. I would like to schedule at one of the September work sessions, when Rich is going to be here, to do a full update as to where we are with the PFOs treatment project across the board. I know he sent an update down to the I-Bank, maybe within the last two or three weeks. It was on my desk when I came back from vacation.
Right.
But I want the public to be aware of those scheduled dates that we communicated to the state.
Right.
So if you both could take, I'll talk to him too, but if you could put that on the schedule for one of our work sessions in September, I think it's time that we brought the public up to speed as to where we stand with the rollout of all the treatment facilities.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, personally, I put a calendar up on the wall just to show which ones are, are going, you know, because there's so much going on, and it'd be a great time to update everyone on progress.
People will be back from vacation, and, you know, school will be starting, and people will be a little more in tune to what's happening here in the village. But if we could get that on the calendar, I would appreciate it.
Okay, sounds good.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Let's go.
All right, we are on number four. This is to award the purchase of lab testing equipment for arsenic and trace metal. This would be for an amount to adulant. It would be a state contract purchase for $147,870. If you have any questions, Bill can answer those.
Everybody good? Questions?
I just think it's great. If we can do this in-house, we save so much money.
Sure.
Definitely.
Let's go.
All right, the next one is another award. This is for the chlorine reagent sets. This one is $21,477 from Hock. It's a purchase of a chlorine reagent. I don't know if you want to give any other explanation? Just pretty straightforward. Okay, yeah, okay.
Questions? Let's go.
All right. This one is to authorize a change order number two for Arcadis. It's that, they're our consultant for three of our PFOs facilities. The first change order was because we added distribution main replacement, and they, that was an addition to the project that was unforeseen to replace the aging water mains in the, in the area of the PFOs facility. This one is for additional design changes and permitting costs and various things that, that added up to $200,000. It's, it's just very necessary for them to, to complete these, these three facilities, and so we're recommending this change order.
Questions?
Lonnie, I'll take seven. So. Lonnie, I'll, I'll take seven. So as the council remember, before I went on vacation, I had polled all of you. We had a situation with an elderly resident customer of Ridgewood Water who lives in Wykoff, who inadvertently put in to have auto pay applied to her account. And unfortunately, it essentially cleared out her bank account. So I, this resolution that's requested tonight is a confirming resolution to reimburse the person, which we've already done, which is why I wanted your individual consent beforehand, in the amount of $6,833.77. It was an emergent situation. The person wasn't in a position to pay their bills. That's why we polled the council individually. They gave consent. Bob Rooney's office issued the check, and the resolution next week will be confirming that overpayment reimbursement.
This is for number seven. At first, I thought you were asking me a question on number six, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is for number seven.
Trying to move it along here.
No, no, that's good.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Yep.
Great, let's go.
Okay. Number eight is to authorize, oh, this is for the, the road improvements following the raw water main installation in, in Wykoff, to just approve an agreement with, with the township of Wykoff to get the, the road improvements finalized, basically.
Questions? Next.
The next one is the update of the definitions and materials for the water service lines. I don't have any paperwork on this, but if you have any questions, you may have it in front of you. If you have, we can answer any questions. It's to update our definitions to go along with the.
Questions?
So, so there's been a number of correspondence between Anthony Merlino's office and the Building Department from the UCC on this. We brought in Rich Calby. We just need to make sure that this ordinance is amended to be in line with what the UCC requires. So you'll see the add deletes in the body of the document. That's all UCC-guided.
Thank you.
What's UCC? Uniform Construction Code Act.
Thank you. Next.
And the last one is the property, or the surplus standby generator at our Wharton Deck facility. Do you have a, this is just, what is this?
Bill, just, just talking to the mic.
I, I don't think that's on. The green light. There we go.
We have a generator at our Wharton Die Treatment Facility that is now surplus. It's too small with the new treatment facility. So the electrician on site actually put us in touch with a neighboring town, Ringwood, that needed this size generator. So rather than go into Gov. bids, et cetera, we worked with the CFO, Bob Rooney, to sell it to the neighboring community, help them out. There's also a long lead time on these items, so it was a win-win for both of us.
And, and Rich Calby's been in touch with Scott Heck, who is the manager in, in Ringwood. This will certainly help out their municipality for a piece of equipment that, at this point, is not useful to the village or the Ridgewood Water Company.
Yes, sir.
Questions, anybody?
Great.
Good. I just want to say, thank you for bringing us into the bell lap of our PFAS treatment program. It's very, very exciting.
It is.
And, you know, there was a time when, you know, the cry was, oh my God, I've got Ridgewood Water. And now it's going to be, oh my God, I've got Ridgewood Water.
I've repeated that line to people. I like when you say that.
It's, 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 it's a big deal. Really appreciate it. And I just want to note that in the eight minutes that we have been here together working on this, we've spent $14.3 million, which I think is a new record. You guys are never cheap, never cheap. But thank you really so much for everything you do for us.
You're welcome.
Did you give them the $40,000 recent credit?
I did. I gave them the $39,000 credit for the, for the, for the sale of the generator.
Glad you're keeping track.
Yeah, it was, you, again, you guys aren't a cheap date, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And let's.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to call up Bob Rooney, our Director of our Parking Authority, also our Chief Financial Officer. He has three items tonight under parking, and four items that we'll review under budget.
Good evening, Bob, and welcome.
Good evening, everyone. So the first item under parking is a recommendation for the award of professional service contract with Walker. If you remember, Walker started this journey with the parking garage many years ago. They were supportive in consulting as to the types of garage, the revenue stream that we produced. In this situation, I asked them to give me a proposal back in January of 2025. After getting that proposal and meeting with members of the CBDAC and also Parking Committee, we, I streamed this down to address issues that were raised, and the areas of focus that this award would encompass would be data collection, the review of parking policies and practices, revenue analysis, signage and wayfinding improvements, wayfinding improvements, parking access and revenue control, revenue control system, and the proposal and bidding process for the purchase of new kiosks. So this is a work in progress. This cannot be recommended for award until we adopt the ordinance. That is the next topic I'm going to be talking about. So I would just ask for your input. If you read through this, if you have any suggestions, if you have any questions, I can certainly fine-tune this, bring back to Walker, make some changes to it, and then have something to present to you later on when we have the funding established through the ordinance.
Right. So just to be clear on a few things. First of all, this is a proposal outlining the maximum amount of services that Walker can provide us. I believe firmly, and Bob and I have been having this conversation for the last two years, that we need to do a comprehensive parking study here in the village. And we need to talk about the issues that are being brought, not only from the, from the business owners, but also from the patrons. And, and we need to learn from them. And one of the things I want to do as part of this study is I want to have focus groups. I want to bring folks in from the public, from the business community. It is no accident that this proposal that Bob is bringing forward tonight parallels the path of the Cid, right, and the formation of the Cid, because we want the Chamber, the Guild, and the, and the Cid to be involved in this discussion. Because that's, if, we are not going to make this decision effectively in a vacuum. So what we would like you to do is to, to review the proposal and make recommendations or, or suggestions as to changes. But what we want to do tonight is get authorization to have Matt Jessup's office write the bond ordinance under the parking utility in order to enable the funds to become available to pursue this.
I, I think it's great, especially that you want to do the focus groups, because when I was out all summer and fall last year, the issues with the parking kiosks was one of the things I heard repeatedly, especially from people in the mayor's age group. So I do think that we need. So I do think that we need to involve them in the focus groups, maybe a hilt, that'd be a great meeting for them. So I, I think it's good. I, I'll get into my thoughts on the kiosks, but I just want to say, I think the approach is great in that the gathering data, mostly from the patrons, I think is, in some ways, more important.
And, and as you review this, if you could, if you want to individually send feedback to Bob that he can incorporate in his discussions with Walker as we set up the financing for this, I would, I would suggest we do that.
I'd like to share this with CBDAC and with the ad hoc Parking Committee, Parking Committee. And my three suggestions are expand this proposal to include the West Side. That's important. It can't just be the East Side. And also, I'd like their input on where would be a good place to put EV parking. And I had a third thing.
Jitney.
The jitney, right. I think we're a little far away from looking at a jitney, but that's always been in my mind since I campaigned for being on the council. And I, I think it could really alleviate the number of cars that are looking to park downtown.
One of the things that we, that we talked about, Bob and I, with regard to the jitney service, is maybe not instituting it as an in-house surface, like we saw in Maplewood when we went down there and looked at it, but talking to Walker about whether or not there's private companies. You know, we, we do deal with Boxcar. They have a drop-off location here. Is there a functionality of a company like that, not necessarily Boxcar specific, but a company like that, that might be able to help provide that service? Maybe not in Ridgewood, but just in the area generally, but Ridgewood would be one of the stops to help with that mass transit, that local-based mass transit aspect.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's great.
I think it's great, Bob, and it's ongoing. I agree that we need to go with like a three-pronged, multi-generational approach to this. You know, we have the high schoolers as users, you know, young kids are very quick with the Park Mobile. And you've, you know, people, my, my family would be a case study, because the kids do something totally different than Mike and I than compared to my mom. I also agree about the jitney, but more from the social aspect of a trolley. And with the Cid, you know, with the event space, that is something that people really love for the inter-district, and it could be whimsical. It can promote, it's an event. It's similar to Tony already left, but you know, the hay rides, the tractors. It's all great, and it's fun, but it's also transportation, and that we would love to see a Main Street trolley, as opposed to, no offense to the traditional jitney, but like on a Saturday, that would be a wonderful amenity and attraction. So I think it's great.
Okay. So with, talking about kiosks, another part of this ordinance is for the purchase of kiosks. So I would ask Walker to assist in identifying vendors that sell kiosks that would serve our needs, that would talk about the improvements that we're looking for over what we currently have. Our, the hundred that we have in place right now, go back to 2019, there are no upgrades for them. All the software has been implemented, and so there's no improvements to what we currently have.
And that, when I read that, that's what really concerned me. I mean, that's six years ago.
Yeah.
It seems, it's, that that went out of date pretty quick. And so my, if Walker was who we used before, I would really want to put some guide rails so that they could provide us with vendors that it's not going to be outdated in five years. I mean, it's like, because there, there has been, as you know, a significant number of complaints about the kiosks. And that's not a new thing. I, dare I say, that probably started within a year of them being installed. And, and it's kind of shocking to look at the price tag of these per kiosks, and that we can't upgrade them anyway. That, that to me is crazy. So I, I really, one of the things I strongly want to make sure is that when we get recommendations, that we know how long these are intended to last and what those companies' history is with upgrades.
So Walker was not involved in that, that piece. We had solicited quotes from various vendors. This happened to be the one that was the most reasonable in cost. And also, we had tested five of them on North Broad. We were satisfied what we had at the time, and everything moved forward from there. But no, Walker was not part of that process, but they will be part of that process.
That makes me very happy. I thought you said they were involved with the, the parking garage. That's why I misunderstood what you said.
So they were, they're, the big claim to fame was assisting us in the rate structure and cash flow as to how to, at first, we started to price it with on-street and off-street parking. Then that became confusing, so we made the rates the same. And then we used Walker as a revenue analysis to help us make sure that we had the right rates in place to meet that service requirements and operations. So that was a big piece of what they initially did for us.
Well, maybe what we have to do is when we write the specs for what the kiosk has to have, that, that we put things that they'll, they'll last longer than six years. So now, because it sounds like what you're saying is, we took the cheapest bidder, and sure, it's cheap if you can't ever.
Most reasonable.
So let's just kind of think about that moving forward.
Well, and again, I think Walker needs to tell us what technology is out there, you know, what, what the most sophisticated vendor is. Again, you know, these things are out there. They're being utilized by residents and, and visitors to Ridgewood every single day. They're out there in all, all types of weather events, right? So, you know, this is not necessarily something that you want to go with the most reasonable. You want to go, you want to go with the one that's going to be the most durable, and it's going to last you the longest. And you got to factor in the technology piece to that as well.
Correct.
And, and the most age-friendly. I mean, that, even before the failure started, you know, the fund's too small. It, it's hard in the sun glare. I mean, we, I mean, again, my mother could write the memo, and it, it is a legitimate complaint, and, you know.
And I, I think people fail to realize how many we have. We have 90-some?
100.
100. We have 100 kiosks out there. So, I don't think you, when he told me that number, I was kind of a little shocked by it, because you don't think about it. But when you think about the entire Central Business District, you know, it takes 100 kiosks to, to support that within walking distance.
So before that, we had 1,900 parking meters.
Wow.
So. The other piece of this that Walker will assist with is how the revenue rolls through the parking meters, because there are merchant service fees that go along with these, that we have to make certain that we're getting the best bang for our buck. And, you know, they should be able to provide input as to the best source that goes with the, the equipment as well.
I'm excited. I'm really excited to see what their recommendations are and to hear back from the focus groups. So thank you for finding them, and this looks great.
So Bob, just to be clear, right now, the professional services contract scope of work is a work in progress.
Yes.
What we're moving on is the bond ordinance to put the financing in place to move forward with both the study and then ultimately the, the, the kiosk work effort.
That's correct.
Just so everybody's clear on what we're, what we're, what we're looking at here.
So what's the total price tag with that? What are you eliminating? Because I have the maximum is 131. You're not taking anything out?
The third page of, the third page of the last of item three, right? Bob, so the, the total appropriation would be 1.372?
123.
So it's $1,372. That includes an estimate on the purchase of 100 kiosks, and also Walker's cost for these services.
And that's for next year?
Right.
Would you imagine putting the purchase in next year?
Well, keep in mind, this is the parking utility.
Yeah.
So it's separate from our, our normal capital fund. We'd like to, we'd like to have the money in place this year, get the scope of work finalized by year end with Walker, which will take some feedback from PAM's committees and, and from the, from the governing body. And then, you know, hopefully by year end, if not January, we'd be able to award the contract to Walker and get the work effort underway. Are we good on parking?
You're good.
All right. Bob, you want to move to budget with the revenue and expenditure report for second quarter?
Okay, so just to move forward quickly on this, I'll give you the highlights, and if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. As far as the local revenues for the general fund, we've realized 44% of what we budgeted for up through May 31st. That does not include money that hasn't been paid over yet from the capital fund for interest on investments. And it also does not include, in addition, the number for interest and cost on taxes, which went up from $125,000 to $685,000 as of July 31st as a result of the tax sale. Next page is the distribution from the state for state aid. That's anticipated to be received by the end of this month. Page three, other special items. We realized 83% of what we anticipated so far. Receipts from delinquent taxes. We received 2.4 million, again, from Valley in June, and another 1.9 million towards delinquent taxes in July. So the revenues of about 43% are what's expected. Under the appropriations, and then starting on page four, most of the items that, most of the percentages that are in excess of expectation are usually due to encumbrances that have been incurred during the year. So blanket orders, for example, I always use is tires. So if we know we're going to spend $200,000 on tires for the year, we ask the department to encumber those funds so that we make sure we have those in place, and we can budget from that. Other than a cash flow, where you're only recording what you're spending every quarter. So the higher percentages are usually the result of encumbrances. And in salaries and wages, it's also the result of not having allocations booked yet for parking and water allocations that may come from the manager's office, from finance, from various departments that provide service to these other utilities. We just haven't booked the credits coming into the account yet. And if there's less than expectations, it's usually that some of the departments, due to the timing of the budget, have not put their encumbrances into the system. So any questions on the, on the general fund appropriations?
Nope. Anything else?
Nope, we're good.
Okay.
So as I reported at the top of the meeting, under the manager's report, we're in receipt of the 2024 municipal audit. Bob's prepared the corrective action plan in accordance with the statute. So Bob, you just want to take us through the, the four recommendations?
Sure. So there's basically four items that are consistent with the last six, seven years. The first one, which is in segregation of duties, basically requires that departments report to finance on a monthly basis what their revenues, what their recorded revenues are. And we're in the process of putting 100% of the And we're in the process of putting a hundred percent of the departments under a software program that will allow them to uh, identify what their collections were and report to us so that we can, um, just tighten the internal controls. Finding two is the funding of capital deficits. As Keith said earlier, uh, we'll be proposing cancellations to council uh, as we get, uh, towards the end of September, October. So that will minimize that. Deficits in the balances are also overcome by, when we had a bond sale on twenty-five, some of those deficits were eliminated. Excuse me. Number three is associated with number one. It's the same thing as, um, establishing, uh, reporting of departmental revenues to the finance department. And the last is encumbrances. So in capital, you're allowed to carry your encumbrances forever. A lot of our POs that are established by ordinances, uh, need to be updated and that's part of the process of the cancellations. So we look forward to having the department heads, um, address those.
When you say PO, is that purchase orders?
Yes, ma'am.
So I just wanted to say how exciting it was to see S D L being used more and just because we've seen that price tag and I love it. And I love when I get to tell the public how much I love this application because I'm hoping within the building department, we use it more. And we've owned the license for a while, so it's great. It's great use. I'm really excited to see it.
Other questions?
All right. So, so Mayor, if I may, I'd like to just skip three and go to four, just very quickly. So item four under budget has to do, um, with the three hundred thou, three hundred and three thousand dollar appropriation in the budget uh, that's allocated from the open space trust fund. Historically, uh, the village has used the, that allocation of about three hundred thousand dollars a year to pay off debt service relative to the acquisition of property. Uh, most recently that has been Habernicle. There have been other, other acquisitions in the past where that allocation has been, um, directed to. This year, because we are in the final phase of paying off the Habernicle acquisition, um, a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars of that will go towards the acquisition call, uh, debt service. But there'll be a remaining one hundred and eighty thousand dollars, um, out of the three hundred and three. So Bob and my recommendation to the council is that we take that hundred and eighty thousand dollars and we apply it to the Habernicle Pavilion. Uh, so that'll pay down the debt service on that and it'll still be connected to the intended use of the park.
I'm fine with it. What was the, the full bond on the Pavilion? Three?
Three seventy sometimes.
So you're paying fifty percent? That, that's fine.
Yeah. All right. Bob, you good with that?
I'm fine.
Okay.
No, I think it's, it's a great use of open space because per the state ordinance that it has to go to the development of parks. And for anyone that's seen the Pavilion, it looks fantastic. Um, it's not done, but it still looks great. And so I think it's, it's perfectly maps to what the intended uses of those, the trust fund. So I fully support it. I think it's great.
And it pays the debt down, which is, if Evan, I'm channeling Evan.
It's, it's an additional revenue source that pays down debt service, which is, which is helpful as we prepare our budget each year.
But with respect to, we can just accrue for a while too, outside of we, if we didn't want to pay the debt down. We can just keep going and build a smaller, if we wanted to buy future property, yes?
You could, but rather than issue additional debt, you'd want to put, pay it down.
And Shedler has what, four more years on the bond, the original purchase bond?
I, I think we're done with Shedler and.
I think we are too.
Citizens.
It was less than twenty years?
Yeah.
Great.
Yep. Because there was grant money above too, so that offset.
That's great.
And the accrual, like that's part of why the referendum's coming up, to increase it to a full set. So then we would be able to do that. So then as properties become available, we would have the funds to acquire them.
So circling back to item three, uh, this is the bond ordinance where we're going to discuss the down payment for the purchase of the Warner Theater. Bob, if you could just hang around for this discussion, um, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor, who's been intimately involved in some of these discussions.
Thank you, Keith. Um, uh, as everyone knows, um, last year, our hearts were broken when our beloved Warner Theater closed. Um, at that time, I told you that this council would work to give the theater new life as a performing arts center. And I am pleased to report that we have news for the village that we want to share with you. After lengthy discussion and negotiation with the current owners, the Village of Ridgewood and the Ridgewood Arts Foundation will be entering into an option agreement to purchase the theater. At the same time, we will be applying for a grant from the N J E D A, which is the New Jersey Economic Development Authority, that will finance up to eighty percent of the cost of the renovation. And that's a big deal because this will not be inexpensive. But here is the deal. If we get the grant, we're off to the races. But if we don't get the grant, we will not likely purchase the theater. And while we have many hurdles ahead of us, entering into the agreement with the current owners was a giant step forward. The next big step will be application for the grant and getting approval. Here's the timeline. We plan on executing the agreement with the current owners in the current weeks, in the coming weeks. We will be applying for the grant in the fall and hope, hope to get approval by the end of the year. If we get approval, first curtain will likely be in three to five years. Tonight, we will be discussing the terms of the agreement, which are as follows. The village will enter into a purchase option agreement with the current owners for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. If we get the grant, we will pay an additional two and a half million dollars to purchase the theater. If we don't get the grant, the deal is over. We have also been working with the Ridgewood Arts Foundation, who I cannot tell you how impressed and pleased I am to be working with them. They will ultimately be applying for the grant and if this all goes forward, the Ridgewood Arts Foundation will be operating the theater going forward. I want to take a moment to recognize Jill Williams, president of the Ridgewood Arts Foundation, Kristin Plumlee from the Ridgewood Arts Foundation, and on hybrid access, Alina Swanson and Lorraine Haskins for their support and incredible help on this project. This is a once in a generation opportunity to save our one hundred-year-old theater from development. Let's see if we can get another hundred years out of it as a performing arts center. And with that, I want to call Jill up to the mic to say a few words on behalf of the Ridgewood Arts Foundation because without the Ridgewood Arts Foundation, this project could not go forward.
Good evening. I'm Jill Williams, the current president of the Ridgewood Arts Foundation. We are a five oh one C three nonprofit organization. We've been operating for around eight years with the mission of, uh, supporting and funding the arts in and around Ridgewood. And I'd just like to say that we're very excited to have the opportunity to participate in the potential renovation and revitalization of the Warner Theater. Uh, I grew up growing to, going to Warner Theater as a child, uh, in Ridgewood and, um, it would be, uh, thrilling, thrilling for the village, uh, if we are able to make this happen. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jill. And now I open it up to the council for discussion. Questions, comments?
Well, comment is congratulations to you, Mayor, for pulling this together. This was so many steps and pieces flying in. It was your expert work that brought it together. So thank you for all that you did to make this happen.
And a big vision, you know?
Thank you. Thank you.
I mean, obviously, thank you to everybody and clearly it's very exciting, but the reality is it's going to save our town in a lot of ways. Our town has had a lot of transformative changes. Um, I remember how sad our entire community was when this happened. And I think when everybody reads about this, I see a reporter here, hopefully it'll be written, it's, it's truly exciting. And, um, you know, we see a lot of development that not everybody loves and this is just something to rally around. I'm so excited to see Kristin when our kids were little and participated in the arts. It's going to be great for the town, the businesses, our high school, um, and so many other surrounding areas who don't have this space. So I just, I think it's excellent, but, um, it's such a savior because that block needs this to happen. And I'm grateful to everybody and Paul did put an enormous amount of work into this and to the Arts Foundation who supported him. We are so incredibly grateful.
So exciting.
Um, I remember fifteen or twenty years ago, coming to a meeting where, um, uh, the artsy part of our community, which is significant, was trying to figure out a way to come up with a performing arts center. And there was no venue, there was no space. And when the theater closed, once we recovered from, uh, that fallout, the cry came out to try and do something with this. And I will tell you that the, uh, this is a, a huge project. Uh, and the N J E D A grant program, um, is so perfectly suited for this and the timing could not be better. So what I will say is keep your fingers crossed. Um, because we have a lot of people working very, very hard to try and make this happen for our community.
I think we're supposed to say break alike.
Or something like that. So we are good and let's move on.
Um, next item, and I think the last item for Mr. Rooney, is a chapter one fifty-nine resolution. Uh, this is to amend the two thousand and twenty-five budget, uh, by adding the grant that I discussed earlier from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the improvements to the Van Ness Square Bus Shelter in the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Everybody good?
Perfect gateway to come see something at the performing arts.
Bob, thank you. Safe home.
Thanks, Bob.
Item six under budget is to award a sole source contract for breathalyzer testing instrument for the police department. You have memorandum here from Sergeant Ward. Um, the equipment is necessary to remain in compliance with the N J S P alcohol and drug testing unit standards uh, for testing suspects arrested, driving well intoxicated. Uh, the five different pieces of equipment are listed and outlined in the memorandum and the total cost is twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Everybody good? Let's go.
Brand new test. Number seven is award a contract under state contract for tax map maintenance, G I S support and state certification. This is a recommendation, uh, that comes from Chris Rudishhauser and William Palumbo, our tax assessor. Uh, the recommendation is to award the contract to Civil Solutions, uh, off of the New Jersey State Contract. I will tell you that the total cost to update the tax maps, uh, will amount to two hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. However, only twenty-five thousand of that will come out of this year's budget. Um, we are mandated, um, by the Bergen County Tax Board uh, to move forward with preparation for a reevaluation in two thousand and twenty-seven. And the first step towards moving to that mandate is to update our tax maps. Um, the balance of this will be funded over a period of time as we head towards two thousand and twenty-six.
All good? Let's go.
Okay. Item seven is, uh, I'm sorry, item eight is award of contract under state contract, uh, public safety, V H F radio paging base and U H F radio repeater. This is a memorandum from Jeremy Kleiman, our O E M coordinator, uh, to award a contract to Goose Town. Um, the quotes are attached, uh, for the described pieces of equipment, total amount forty-one thousand, sixty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents.
Everybody good?
Questions?
Great. Um, and I'm going to, um, take a five-minute break for the council. We're going to keep it to five minutes. It's nine fifty-five. We are going to reconvene at ten P M, just enough time to stretch our legs. Because I promised members of the council that we would do this tonight.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I just said. Well, yes, for the better of.
This is, I have to say, this is the first time I've ever taken a number of years. I think the first time I've ever taken a.
I'm happy to be here. I'm Asian.
I'm actually sure of that. But I have.
You're very comfortable. Oh, it's, that's the most.
No, it's really bad.
I don't know why. It's too much.
Yeah.
I was so sad. I don't really.
See, that's the monkey.
I don't want to say that.
He'd be sweating.
Yeah.
I mean, I got that.
That's what I just said. Well, yes, for the better of.
This is, I have to say, this is the first time I've ever taken a number of years. I think the first time I've ever taken a.
I'm happy to be here.
I'm sweating.
I'm actually sure of that.
But I have.
You're very comfortable.
Oh, it's, that's the most.
No, it's really bad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ah, I was so sad.
Yeah.
I don't really.
Yeah.
See, that's the monkey.
Yeah.
I don't want to say that.
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 Yeah.
I shouldn't have.
Yeah.
It's just a little.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think that it's hard.
Yeah.[313.00][313.00][S314.00]
So, yeah, I think that it's hard.
Other than that, I think it's, 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 it's.
You can always text me if you have some.
Probably asked you.
Yeah.
I think I've been so involved.
So, it's always.
I have these.
From the wasps.
No, it's, 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 yeah, definitely wasps.
You wouldn't be surprised if it was.
Paul, it's more giant.
I just think that.
Yeah.
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 I'll tell you that we had a very productive, we've had multiple productive meetings with representatives from the Library of the Boulder Center and the Ridgewood Historical Society. There's a lot of excitement about this. And as I said, you know, in the beginning of July, we quickly realized that a potential tenant was probably not in the cards. And if there was a potential tenant, it was going to be used more for storage or some type of nonhistoric use. And the, in meeting with SHPO back in the beginning of July, I think it was July 2nd, was our pre-meeting heading towards the Historic Sites Council hearing on July 21st. You know, they were looking for mitigative measures on what the future of the House was going to be and how it was going to be used. And I think that meeting is really what had staff turn the corner and understand that the only way we are going to be able to create a destination for people to learn and grow and understand about the history and cultural of this area, the meaningful nature of that area of Ridgewood. Obviously, there's not Revolutionary War evidence on the Shedler site itself, but certainly across the highway by the church and near the cemetery, there is. And we want to amplify that historic and rich culture that exists there at the House. I can tell you that the Library has already provided me a three-page document of programming that they would like to see there. Carol is working diligently to put together, to enact some of the plan that is before you and that has been sent to SHPO. But she's already started to work to identify what the spaces in the House would be utilized for. We're talking about a gallery space and a meeting area, in the living room, dining room, and on that lower level. And then on the second floor, having a room that would be used for artistic endeavors, activities for kids, a room that might focus on the athletic piece of it to complement the park if it's approved by the DEP. And also to have office space up in the third bedroom on the second floor where the wood burning stove is. So, you know, this extensive plan, it's 13 pages long, not going to go through it all, but it certainly outlines the executive summary, the mission and goals of the Center, the key features of the Center, a lot of programming elements, programming and public calendar, the educational impact, the social and cultural impact, the historic preservation impact, economic and tourism on the area, the SWOT analysis which was required, how this would integrate with the 250th anniversary of the country next year, the operations and management plan with regard to staffing and operating expenses and any capital expenses that we would need to consider for next year's budget, funding and sustainability strategy. So, you know, there's been extensive work in a short period of time since that meeting with SHPO on July 2nd that's been put into this. And we are hopeful as a staff that the Council will work with us to pursue this endeavor with a supportive resolution next week.
Keith, I just want to say that this is a, we have a $2.6 million investment in this House. And Siobhan, to her credit and determination, has been trying to find a tenant for years on this. And I think it's fair to say, single-handedly been trying to do this. And the best we could come up with was a $2.6 million storage center. And I have to say that the work that you've done on this and your proposal here and Lori Steinbacher and her staff at the Library, I know are enthusiastic about this. And I just want to say that I'm so impressed and so grateful that you have come up with a proposal that I am confident that this Council will support wholeheartedly. So, really, thank you so much.
And the Center would address a lot of the issues that unbeknownst to us as a staff were presented in the conditions that were listed by the SHPO staff when they made their presentation at the Historic Sites Council. So, again, we didn't know that was going to come. You don't know how they're going to present the application until the day of the hearing. We had no prior knowledge of that. But of the nine conditions that they outlined, many of those nine conditions were encompassed in this plan that had been submitted.
Yeah, I was very, and having nothing to do with the submission, with the, you know, with the SHPO application, I was just so upset for the longest time that we'd spent all this money and this was going to be just this outlier that doesn't get used, that we spent a tremendous amount of taxpayer dollars on. And I know a lot of it was grant funding, but that's taxpayer dollars too. And so, again, thank you.
And a lot of this is, a lot of this will go to the synergy between bringing people there for the potential park, should it be approved by the DEP, and how that complements attracting people to also partake in the events and the programming that could occur at the House.
Yeah.
I just want to tag on to stuff the mayor said. Having read through this, I was really impressed with the amount of effort and thought that went into it. And while the mayor said Siobhan has been out there pounding the pavement trying to find a single user of this building, that because it was 2.6 million of taxpayer money, something just never felt right with that. And then with this, it was like, that's the piece of the puzzle we need. And what I'm excited about is it's not just capturing the historic, but also the cultural. I mean, there's a lot of culture in Bergen County, you know, with, from the Dutch settlers and all the others. And so, to be able to do that, I could really see this being used by a wide group of people. And then having been on Parks and Rec for as long as I have and seen how they try to use the stable for a lot of artistic shows, like the most recent one, it's cramped.
So Frank, the meeting that we had this week, for the first time, we actually included Nancy Beagos in that meeting because they have a model at the stable.
Yeah.
With the monthly exhibits that they put on from an artistic standpoint. She was invaluable in the meeting that we had on Monday morning in talking about how we would implement that program because now we have another place to provide exhibit space to local artists, to those who want to put on some sort of art show, photography show, historic, put historic artifacts on display there, which again goes back to the, to one of the conditions that was requested or outlined, I shouldn't say it was requested, but was outlined in the resolution that's before the Historic Sites Council. So, there's a lot of really good synergy here. And there's a tremendous amount of energy amongst the groups that are involved in this. And, you know, that actually excites me because I have people, we'll volunteer to staff this, we'll run this program there. And for those in the public who, you know, might say, well, what exactly is this going to look like? The model that we used is the Ray House in Gothelbrook Park. So, if you've never been to the Ray House, I would strongly encourage you, you know, it's not far out of Ridgewood, right down Gothel Road. But stop in there and you'll see how they use that space. It's a little bigger than the Zabrowski-Shedler House, but you'll see how they use that space to put on these exhibits, to have these activity areas, to pull in kids. And it's funny because, you know, I had, I shared the story at the Historic Sites Council hearing. You know, I actually had a parent say to me while I was watching my daughter's game that she actually took her kids into the Ray House because they had a ballgame at Gothelbrook Park. And that was one of the reasons, she said, "I would have never known that was there had I not had to go for the ballgame for her son." So, you know, that's part of what we're trying to create and how we're trying to bring that whole area some life and some meaning and make it a place that the community can celebrate.
Yeah, fantastic.
Yep, it's wonderful.
Great.
I just wanted to say two things. Obviously, everyone said, so in showing the House, there's always the issue that $2.6 million should serve a public purpose. So, when we met with other people and we looked at 100% revenue generating, because this is our last building not generating revenue, is the last one available, the public purpose was always at the expense of a renter or a tenant. I still feel also that with the excitement, we can make revenue on this, we can book events. If you want a small wedding, this would be great. If you want a small event, it would be wonderful as well. So, the public purpose expressed in here is great. I want to just say thank you to all the partners, but thank you to everybody who was positive about this. We had a Fields Committee meeting there. That group was incredibly optimistic about it. Thank you to the people who donated furniture with us and actually worked with us. We did an enormous amount of outreach and I'm forever grateful to people who just came and looked and took the time, HPC, who ran the tours. So, we're really grateful to have partners. With respect, I wanted to say to Cynthia, we, once this is set and the resolution is set, we can reach out to the Bergen Historical Society. Fun fact, Peggy Norris used to work at the Ridgewood Library in the Bowger, so we can...
Interestingly enough, when one of our meetings that we've had already with the folks at the Library, the Bowger Center partners with the Genealogy Society of Bergen County.
And then we could get into the newcomers. So, we, once we're set, the people who we haven't yet partnered with, and I do want to thank Mrs. Norris because she came and, you know, she's been very helpful with this, but our outreach is not done yet. So, once this is solidified and hopefully this House finds its place in a very approvable, vibrant park development coming on the 21st, I just want to say thank you to everybody who, because not everybody came to this with a positive attitude. So, for those people who did, who toured it, and particularly for our committees that staffed it, I'm very grateful.
And to Siobhan's point, I don't want to belabor this, it's late, but, you know, we would treat the rental of this facility similar to how we treat the rental of the stable.
Yeah.
So, you know, small groups where it's appropriate.
Big parties.
You know, there would actually be a fee schedule that would be approved and adopted, just like we have for our other facilities, including the stable. And Nancy's team is already on that and aware of it. And, you know, we look forward to more discussion about this, but certainly looking forward to a formal Council endorsement going into next week's council meeting.
It's a big deal. Thank you, Keith.
Mayor, under Operations, we've covered one through five. I'm going to defer to Heather, number six, which is the 2026 Village Council meeting dates, if you can believe it.
Right, so it's August, so we always discuss it now, so we have it for the calendar. So, all of our meetings, as you know, are on Wednesdays, usually the first, second, and fourth Wednesdays. The meetings begin at 7:30 unless it's a holiday. So, next year, we have a few that have to be changed. In April, April 22nd is the, it's actually the fourth Thursday of the month and the second day of Passover, so the recommendation is to move the work session to Monday, April 20th.
Which one is that?
April 420.
Okay.
Right. The next one's July, so July 1st is the first Wednesday of the month. July 4th will be observed on July 3rd, which is the Friday. We would not be able to really get a public meeting agenda packet ready in those few days. Therefore, our recommendation is to move both meetings forward one week, so 7:00, 8:00 for our public work session and 7:15 for our public meeting.
That's good. Guess I'm away from the forest.
And then the last one is November, the second Wednesday of that month is November 11th, which of course is Veterans Day. So, our proposal is to move it to Monday, the 9th.
Good.
In addition, I'd like to set Council chat dates for March 28th, May 2nd, and October 3rd. That's, we did them in March, May, and October this year. It seemed to work out well. In addition, the Council, Coffee with the Council date, which is mostly for new residents, we're looking at September 12th, it's traditionally the Saturday after Labor Day. Labor Day is later next year because it's so early this year. In addition, I want to point out that this year, Coffee with the Council is on September 6th. I believe our calendar says the 13th, that's incorrect. It is on the 6th. And I know there may be some other events on the 13th, so I just wanted to point that out and let everyone know that Coffee with the Council this year will be September 6th. Again, it's traditionally for new residents. We don't say to residents who have been here that they can't attend, but it's basically for new residents to meet the governing body on a casual basis.
And they get the letters, right?
They, yes, all the new residents get letters, correct. So, you're all okay with these changes?
Yeah, good. I have a question, just wondering, is it possible to send us calendar invites?
Yeah, I will, I will, once.
That'd be great.
We actually do the resolution in December, but we will definitely send you calendar invites.
Thank you.
Heather, you're not going to make the joke? I was going to say, is it possible you could accept them all when we send them? It's late, I had to, I had to, brother.
Send me the link.
I wish, I wish I had some acting authority over these people because obviously I don't.
Send me the link, it's an inside joke, but that's okay. Moving on to the appointment of an acting municipal court administrator, our court administrator, Erica Will, who by the way is doing a fabulous job, has requested that Teresa Ernst be appointed as the acting municipal court administrator for the Ridgewood Municipal Court on an interim basis for continuity and essential functions of the court. This would only be used during the scheduled or unscheduled leaves of absence, when Eric is not available, a disaster, a national security crisis, until the absence or inability to be present ceases. This is required by the Bergen visonage and, but it needs to be approved by formal resolution.
Good, everybody good?
Yep.
Let's go.
Next item is renewal of membership in the Bergen County Joint Insurance Fund. The Village of Ridgewood has been a member of the Bergen JIF for over two decades. We are in our third year, so we must renew our membership in the Bergen JIF through an adoption of resolution. This new term would take us from 2026 through 2029.
Let's go.
Next is request for an endorsement for a Community Development Block Grant for Share Inc. This is at 104 Cottage Place. Share is applying to CDBG for a leaking pipe in the elevator shaft. Total cost is $3,750, but a grant application to CDBG requires an endorsing resolution from the Village Council.
Good.
Yep. Next up is a memorandum from Carol Balkowski, who you know is working with the New Jersey Division of Deaf and Hard of Hearing, grant application. This is, we were previously awarded a $70,000 grant through the help of Bergen County to install hearing loops in the courtroom, youth center, and senior lounge. We are in need of an endorsement resolution supporting the memorandum of understanding between the County of Bergen and the Village of Ridgewood in order to execute and receive the funds. Questions?
I just wanted to thank Carol, the county. Obviously, Tracy's stepped in here, Ridgewood's the beneficiary here, and of course, our Access Committee, and make a plug that this year in Access, we are again hosting Sign Language Event at the Ridgewood Public Library. It's incredibly well-run. We're very grateful. We're trying to capture, American Sign Language is now a language option at our high school, so we're partnering with the high school. And steps like this are really meaningful and nobody else in the county applied, so that made us the sole winner. And we applied on a Thursday and it's going to win the fastest turnaround we found out on Monday. So, thank you to Keith's office. And if anybody'd like anything more about this, it's, hearing loss is often called the invisible disability, so the more we talk about it, the more people will understand it. So, I'm very grateful for that from Access and from everybody.
And finally, we have a memorandum from our Director of Parks and Recreation, Nancy Beagos, with regard to surplus property. There are two pieces of equipment that are no longer operable that formerly supported the Grayden Pool Refreshment Area. She's requesting that both pieces of equipment be declared as surplus property. Resolution's attached.
All good.
Okay, Mayor, that concludes my portion of the agenda.
Let's go back to public comment.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Boyd A. Loving, Ridgewood taxpayer. I know that the manager likes to keep things straight and I like to keep things straight too. It was said earlier that I used the manager's name or his title when I was talking about the situation over at the town garage. I did not. I indicated that someone said, and I was not thinking that the manager said it because I believe it was a member of Council that said it, and I won't say who said it on the Council, but I did not indicate that the manager told me that. Somebody else told me that. So, if you can just keep that straight, I did not use your name nor did I use your title when I said that.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is that I did not ask how much soil was being removed. I indicated that two to four feet worth of soil was being removed, but I did not ask for the quantity. So, you used my name, Deputy Mayor, when you said that. I did not ask that question, okay?
Yep, sorry.
The other thing is Deputy Mayor indicated that with respect to the upcoming August 21st hearing with the Historic Sites Committee, that people should be aware that they could call in and make their comments, which is good. However, there was some confusion during the July 21st meeting when it was indicated that comments, written comments would be cut off. A July 22nd memo from Jennifer Lyons indicated that the public can indeed submit written comments until the next meeting date. So, along with being able to call into the meeting, you, if you're a member of the public, you can also submit your written comments to that meeting as well. So, if there's anybody out there listening who wishes to make a written comment, you may make a written comment, public may make written comments until the 21st meeting. There was some confusion again during the July 21st meeting that that might not be the case, but that is the case, and it was confirmed in writing by a staff member of NJDEP. And finally, I was absolutely shocked this evening when a member of the dais had the audacity to say that if a member of the public couldn't figure something out, there's a class at the library to help them. That was an uncalled-for comment. To me, it was an insult that should not have been used and that person should receive an apology. That was totally uncalled for. I saw the memo where that person asked for an explanation of what she was trying to get at, and to say that if you can't figure it out, there's a class at the library that could help you was just, that should not have been said from the dais. Thank you.
Thank you, Boyd. Anybody else? Seeing no one, we'll go to our hybrid access. Cynthia, you're up.
Hi, good evening. Cynthia, Keith, can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Yeah, so I guess to piggyback on Mr. Loving's comments, you know, I too was a little shocked. You know, this has been a, you know, very contentious proposed plan. The neighbors, you know, have told you that we, you know, have lost trust and, you know, have felt marginalized. And then, you know, to make a comment, and I don't have the best hearing, so let me preface this by saying, I thought I heard you talk about going to the library and getting technical assistance. If that's actually what was said, I mean, you know, sorry, that's mind-blowing. It's so insulting. You know, I'm asking a basic question. I don't care if the property is on an angle or not on an angle. There are feet. I asked a specific question about residents who pay a lot of money in taxes and should know where a public bathroom is in relation to their home. There are three homes there. There are not 35 homes there where you have to do all these calculations. I asked a simple question, I expect a simple answer. I don't particularly care who it comes from, but Siobhan, you were on this email thread and I asked this question over a month ago, I think it was July, 4th of July, you know, when everybody was going off, you know, on their merry way. And you, you know, you told me the scale was in the lower left corner, one inch to 30 feet. You were hesitant to personally provide the information. Why is there no disclosure on this? This is a public bathroom near people's homes. So, you know, the village goes on and on about all these detailed plans for the House and all this other great stuff. How can you not tell residents where a public bathroom is in relation to three residential homes? So, it's mind-boggling to me, and I don't have time to go to the library. I'm not going to sit with this plan and go and try to figure this out. There should be a simple answer. Now, I've copied Matt Rogers on that email and maybe he can help me, or maybe Keith can help me, but somebody should provide an answer. You know, we shouldn't have to beg for this. This is pretty standard, pretty straightforward, and to tell somebody to go to the library for technical assistance is just insulting, I'm sorry. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Rurik, you're up.
Yeah, Rurik Halliburton, Village resident. I want to compliment the Village Council and the Village Manager for a stellar meeting. You have accomplished so much in this meeting today. I'm just absolutely so happy, so happy with everything you've done. Yes, Ridgewood works under you. And please continue with this. Now, just one suggestion to Keith, when he visits with the New Jersey DOT, I beg you not to talk about replacing the berm with a berm. The berm is an eyesore. It has to be maintained. It doesn't provide the safety or the soundproofing, and it really should be replaced by a wall. And also, the berm, we lose sight of the fact, it occupies one out of the seven acres of the property. It's a waste. But plus you add the space between the berm and the, and the fence that the SHPO insists on having, it's more than an acre. It's a big waste of time. I have some other ideas, maybe thinking outside the box, and I can write to you, Keith, separately. But again, going back to what I was saying before, I mean, people can find, you know, find problems with whatever you do. I mean, you can line the streets of Ridgewood with gold brick and someone is going to say, is going to complain. Please keep up the good work. And from this, the resident who's lived here since 69, my wife and I love what you do and thank you, thank you, thank you. Take care.
Thank you, Rurik. Seeing no one else, I'm going to close public comment.
Mayor, if I may?
I'd like to say something.
I'm getting it before you.
I'd like to go first.
You want to go first? I'm going after you.
You're the mayor, you get to go first.
All right, then I'm going to go first. You know, I barely remember the comment that was referenced by Siobhan. It was said in an offhanded way, as I recollect. And in terms of people being insulted and hurt for the lack of answering questions, I don't know the exact number, but I don't know, maybe we've spent $100,000 answering questions? And of all of the issues that we have spent time on in this council for the last couple of years, this is, we've answered more questions about Shedler than about every other issue combined. And in terms of being hurt and insulted, forgive me, Siobhan has been spoken to in an untoward fashion more times than I can count, in a tone that I find offensive. And she comes back week after week after week, working hard to try and make sure that everything gets done right. And that's why I wanted to get in ahead of her because I am dumbfounded at people being offended by what was clearly just a joke, not intended in a derogatory fashion. Everyone's got her phone number. If you call her up, she'll do all the legwork for you. And she was just trying to make it clear there. So, I have to tell you, we really have to take a step back from the edge on who's being offended here because if we go back in the tapes for the last couple of years, I think that Siobhan has a much longer list of comments directed at her that were not respectful. I'm done. Keith, you?
I'd like to go. Thank you, Paul. I'm not offended. What I'm concerned with is the misrepresentation of this. So, obviously, I take answering the public very seriously. This council knows it. I respond to any and all email, no matter what it is. I want to describe what's gone on here. The village has issued a technical map, okay? And the map has the answers to all your questions. There's 26,000 people in this village. A map has a legend, it has a scale, it has dimensions, it has colors. And we get asked a lot of questions, right? I do have a degree in civil engineering, so sometimes I go too heavy. There's, because Shedler is contentious, there's several emails that come to the council. I'm willing to bet I respond to the most of them. No offense to my fellow council members, but I do answer all of them. I know fellow council members because they're a little, sometimes they're a little tense. Don't. We issued a map that your taxpayer dollars paid money from Suburban Consultant, and there's a legend on the bottom. Again, being an engineer, being a Girl Scout leader, map reading skills, this is important. I need everybody in the town to know how to answer their own questions because we are not technical people.
Yes.
So, the first amount of questions that came in is, how do I decipher the distance from the bathroom, which is clearly identified on the map, to the houses? Okay, there's multiple houses. That could be... Okay, there's multiple houses. That could be multiple distances. The bathroom is on an angle, like this. So now I'm left with, as my inner engineer, do I measure from here? Do I measure from here? Do I measure from there? And because it's contentious, people will weaponize my response if I pick the midpoint, the high point. So I very clearly, I think seven or eight weeks ago, said there's a legend. One inch equals 30 feet. Seems like a reasonable answer. Went back and forth. People said they couldn't find it. They can't have the reading glasses, to which I said, because I live in a multi-generational house, it is entirely possible, this is not meant in insulting, that people can't operate their phones, they can't zoom in on a map, they don't understand basic web functionality. Those are things that I deal with, and I know this council deals with, all day long. Insert joke with Paul.
While you're looking at me on this.
So what, what's concerning to me is the council can't answer every technical question. And when we get widespread emails, I don't know, with like 35 people, including state reps, saying what's the distance of the bathroom to the residence, I don't know how to answer that. You have one bathroom that's on an angle, and you have four residences. So which residence? What midpoint? And all I can think about is giving an answer and having it being over or understated and having public comment then saying I misrepresented it. It would be much better to me that after taxpayer dollars were spent on an expensive, premium, technical document, if the public understood how to read it and interpret it, okay? And then we could deal with that. So I did not mean to be insulting. We, again, we are an age-friendly community. 25% of our population is over the age of 55. We have technical questions all day long. You have the map. You have the scale. You can get the measurement. If you can't get that, I can get you training at the library. I didn't, I said all that. I meant all that. If you were, I would tell the same council, sometimes I do, sometimes, again, putting Paul under the bus, I get frustrated. We use a lot of technology, a lot of differentials, and all of, when, when we read law, they get frustrated with me because I'm like, what the heck does that mean? The answer to the questions about the project are on the expensive, tax-funded disclosure that we disclosed. If you would like to know the distance from the bathroom, which is on an angle, pick a point, take a ruler, measure it to the property, and then multiply the inches by 30. I'm hesitant to give one answer because there's four residents. So I know it's late, but I, and I appreciate it, Paul. I don't need people to, I need the public to understand, we're not going to answer every question about every map, but we're going to make sure is that the public understands this is disclosed, and it's here, and if you need assistance, we will train anybody and we will help anybody. I'm a big promoter of the library. It wasn't meant as a joke. If anybody has any questions, we offer a ton of training, for mayors included.
Can I go, Keith, real fast?
Sure.
I'm sorry. That, to say it simply, what you just said, I'm going to pick out the pieces I think that's most important here. It's a technical map. As much as you're my friend and I respect you, you're not qualified to give a technical answer. So this was looking for a technical answer. You're not the person to answer it. You told somebody how to find it, period.
And I'm not offended, so we don't all need to defend me. It's fine.
So through you, Mayor, to Mr. Loving. Boyd, let me first say I appreciate the fact that you said that I like to keep it straight, because I do, and I pride myself on that. With regard to the town garage situation, I have said more times than I can count the response to your question tonight, which is that there are two years' worth of, there's two years' worth of testing that needs to happen, and that two quarters' worth of testing would reap enough information for the LSRP to come back to the council and make recommendations as to what the site could potentially be used for. If I represented that I thought I said that to you, I, I may have. I've said it at this dais a number of times, so I may have just assumed that you were talking about me. But that's the answer. So regardless of who said what, when, that's the answer. Two years' worth of testing, two quarters should be sufficient enough information to make that determination. With regard to the, how much soil was being removed, that was clearly Mr. Know's question. You asked about soil replacement, and you, and then I discussed the soil testing policy that we now have in place. Excuse me, one second while I fuddle with my computer here. The third issue is something that I'm glad you brought up because I need to address this. Because shortly after the July 21st Historic Sites Council meeting, I had two people reach out to me and asked me if I demanded that public comment be squelched between the July meeting and the August meeting. And the first time I said it, I said, well, you know, somebody was playing the game of telephone, and they were given some misinformation. The second time I heard it from someone else, I said, well, this, this has to be being perpetuated out there in the community. So I want to be clear, and so clear that I have the transcript in front of me of the July 21st Historic Sites Council meeting, where this was a dialogue between myself and Kate Markipool, who is the Chief Administrator, Director of the Historic Preservation Office in Trent. And this was at the conclusion of the hearing, where I said, so just so I fully understand, because I know you and I are both going to get asked a lot of questions between now and August 21st. There's no additional presentation other than what the public will bring to the public comment, period. And then we will continue just as if this session were to continue on tonight, where you will then consider the resolution, but there'll be no more additional materials or information presented. Now, where that statement can be interpreted as trying to suppress or stifle public comment, I will never know. I will never know. All I asked, the Director of the State Historic Preservation Office, at the end of that meeting, there was no demand. There was a request to understand the process and that the village would not be able to submit any supplemental information between the hearing dates. And she responded, that's correct. So this misinformation that's being perpetuated out there, that the village manager in Ridgewood demanded that no additional information could be presented by the public, is categorically false. So Boyd, I appreciate you bringing it up tonight. I appreciate you allowing me to, the opportunity to, to talk about this, because I hadn't thought about it all day. But in light of the question, I think it's important that we set the record straight, because that's the way I roll. And that is verbatim from the transcript of the July 21st Historic Sites Council meeting.
Thanks, Keith. You know, let's all try and take a step back from the edge here in terms of accusing people of all sorts of things. I've said it many times, we are your neighbors. We may agree with you, we may disagree with you. We are volunteers, and we are here to try as best we can to make our village a better place. We do the best we can. Let's try as much as possible as, to discuss issues, not personalities, because I know that that's how some people want to go. Let's keep it to the issues, because that's what it's really about. When we personalize it, it's a personal attack. And with that, I'm going to hope for better next week. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's go.